It is, uh, it's June 14th. And I was in our meeting. Before I start, I want to read this to you that we hope that all the committees can turn on this. Cituit's Land Board is committed to provide an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minorized communities, communities to feel welcome and respected. We ask our community members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Thank you all very much. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
Second.
Second, my name is Conley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, we'll start off the meeting with Watkins. We're having Watkins this evening. Seeing none, we will move on to the report of the town manager.
Good evening, happy flag, everybody. We'll start as always with our COVID data. Your MAD data for last week was 25, which was down from 36 in previous weeks. Total number of cases, we put it on the board out of 76, which is down from 91. Our positivity rating went from 8.97, 8.87 up to 8.97, so we're up 12 points. Clovis County is at 7.1, down from 8.36. Statewide, it was 6.53, down from 7.73. There were 54 individuals in ICU, down from 70 last week. Eighteen patients are intubated, down from 19 last week. So except for the small increase in our percentage numbers of trending down across the book, which is a good thing. There are still some communities that do have mask mandates in place in all buildings, so you might just want to throw a mask in your car in case you go another time and get stuck by them if they have a mask mandate. Water update, we had some good rain last week, so the reservoirs at 1.75, up from one. Tac factories at 1.75, also up from one. Average daily demand was 1.55, 30 million gallons a day. This is down from 1.669 million gallons last week. Magazines is still heavy at the treatment plant, it's heavy enough to cause discoloration. Rainfall over the last seven days was 2.02 inches measured at the plant. The water department has announced that you can go to the town website, www.cituitssurvey.com, and take a brief survey about the proposed new water treatment plant. We put that live yesterday, about, you know, 200 people click in and answer that, so if you have the chance, the big thing is we will ask for your email address. That's part of that process, and that'll be a way that we'll be able to push your information out to people who are interested after we get that survey all finished. We received a notice, a very brief notice without a lot of details, that utility work will begin in Cohasset on Route 3A between Stockton Shop and Orange Streets, starting on Monday, continuing until August 1st. Between the hours of 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM, traffic will be detoured off Route 3A at Upper King Street. So if you're taking Route 3A in the morning, be prepared for the road to be closed, and you will be detoured, and we take a little longer. If we have no other information about that, I know Chief Thompson talked to him, he's reaching out for additional information from Cohasset. And once we get it, we'll let people know exactly what's going on, but that's the information we got.
I guess, do you have a little bit of additional?
Yeah.
It looks like they're only going to be touring the south town initially, and we know completely.
This week's starting tonight, we're expecting astronomically high tides over 11 feet every night until Saturday at 1:00 AM, Friday night, Saturday morning. Low-lying areas, probably the flight, Macy's, Meyer Flight this week, it's only the evening tides. Tonight it's midnight, every night's about an hour later, so be careful if you park in the low-lying areas. Big name, Cole Parkway. The last thing I have to tell you is Sanctuary at Harry Brook, which is the 40B apartments down there at Kenny's Gardens, will be holding a lottery for the affordable housing units of August 8th, 2022. Public information session will be held via Zoom on June 23rd, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Completed applications must be received at SEB Housing at 2:00 PM, July 25th, 2022. This information is on our town website, or you go to sebhousing.com and click on Affordable Housing Opportunities at the top of the page to get information and details on how to fill out the applications and apply for those affordable units. And that's what I have for this evening.
Mr. Jim, any questions for Jim?
Can anyone from any other town apply to that before passing? Is there any?
I don't believe there's a restriction for residents. Not at this one. Let's take you up, please.
And just to give you back on here, I've had many people comment on the affordability of that. You posted the rents on our website, and it doesn't, I don't know how that's affordable.
It's based on Boston area, catch base over there, and I actually had a discussion with Mrs. Burby about that. I don't know what other basis they use, whether Brockton has their own number that they use, but using a Boston salary income level without here.
86,000 is the affordability level.
Yes, 8% of that, and a single unit, one bedroom, okay? Not including utilities, which is just under 2,000 dollars.
Again, it's based on the Boston area, so we're going to look into it and see if there's other areas that they use, and maybe there's an area that the income is closer to what it is down here, because it's based on the Boston.
I would think that a 40B would have a standard index that it has to go off of, not?
Yeah, just if we fall in the Boston area, and that's the index ages. I mean, actually.
That doesn't seem affordable to most people. And I agree. Hold on, I'm marking it.
Alright, that's it. Any's all, but time to go.
We're up to 50, 50.
Even on the whole.
Alright. And then if one of the comment on the survey, thanks for getting an elevator to do that. It only takes about five minutes to fill it out, but I didn't see a space where it needed email. So you may want to look into that. Did you guys see that? I didn't. Great, we'll move right along, we've got some recognition awards this evening. Chief Thompson, you want to start us off?
Sure.
Evening.
So we have 25 years of service for Lieutenant Paul Moore. We put a little bio on Lieutenant Moore. Lifelong Cituit resident, graduated from B.C. And has a bachelor's degree in sociology from UMass, a master's in animal ecology from Western Illinois. He was appointed to the City Police Department in 1997 at the Plymouth Police Academy. Was in patrol from 97 to 2013. He was promoted to sergeant in the middle of that, '06. 2013, he went into the detective bureau, where he oversaw that until 2018, and he's promoted to lieutenant. And his current role now is lieutenant operations, special operations. And he's in charge of the detectives, the traffic bureau, school resources, natural resources, bringing in special events and internal affairs, so it kind of has that body outside of the patrol division. So as you know, Paul is a lifelong, and really his family's a big part of the community of Cituit. He's a key member of our command staff, and he's, like I said, really involved, second member of Community Christmas too, on their board, so really, like I said, the whole family's been having a good amount of doing back with the community. Congratulations on 25 years of service.
Thank you. I will say, I had to do a double take when I read this one, because I couldn't believe that he had been there for 25 years. Fantastic job. In touch with the community, he knows, he knows he's got four kids, he knows all the kids, and he knows all the activities that are going on in town. He treats everybody with respect, and does a really good job, so I'm happy to see that, that's recognition, that's awesome. Appreciate it. Evening, how was it with Paul?
No, you said really well, he's a great guy, and he's handled the town well, and forward to more service.
More service.
More service from Paul, right?
Absolutely.
So congratulations to him.
Thank you.
And we have a gift for him, sorry he's not being accepted, but hopefully he will.
I appreciate that.
That's a lot.
Thank you. Thanks, Morgan. Chief Murphy, do you want to go next?
Sure.
Evening.
Congratulations, Brian Clark, Brian Clark, he's been with the town for 25 years. Brian came on in June of 97, president of dispatch. When he was a dispatch, he went to school, he was a paramedic. Came on in November of 99, a paramedic. And that was instrumental, back then, you didn't have a lot of paramedics, we were getting that transition from an EMT to paramedic program. We had a handful of paramedics, Brian had to carry the line of quite a bit of the ambulance to get that program successful, so he's a mentor, a teacher, he was our ALS coordinator, which oversees all of our paramedics to make sure they get their training in, all their equipment, supplies they need. He did that stuff, we didn't do it very well. You know, surprise, got a solid, solid guy, 25 years. You know, he's a hell of a dog, he's got 500. On his free time, he's got a brain for the microchip, but he was actually on his way here, and he had to turn around, something came up. You know, just a great firefighter, paramedic, and like I said, one of the early mentors, that really good ALS program. So congratulations, surprise.
Congratulations. Yeah, I mean, another great guy, another huge asset that makes our fire department so great, and as you talked about, needing those people to make that transition, because we realized we were saving more lives than from now fires in this town, and he was a key person in making that transition. You know, I can't say enough about him and the work he does for the town, for the fire department. Congratulations, Brian.
Oh, thank you.
Do that, he's coming here, he's going to turn around, so.
But I will tell him.
Sure, he is, but he was gifted, thank you for your time.
I can commemorate that for Brian as well, so thank you, and also, their names also fall story on the tax. So.
Thank you, Brian. Can we have one more this evening? Kevin, if you want to.
So Mike Green is here, and he's celebrating 25 years, and I told him he had to come to Florida Swipeman tonight to talk about road salt. Would have been here, but his wife and daughters worked with me to get here and played right along, so. Mike's a child in the Highway Browns Department, two of my easiest divisions to run. I see that as sarcastically. He's also the town's P1. Sometimes a very thankless job, his work includes paving streets, repairing roads, with potholes, guardrails, moving, maintaining fields, street trimming, upkeep around town buildings, and so much more, like snow removal and storm cleanup. I've been with Mike when I think he's worked five days a night spring, so he takes his job seriously. So, the first thing that came to mind is not only has Mike Green worked for the town of Cituit for 25 years, but he survived 25 storm seasons incident. I would say winters, but it seems like we get just as many bad storms year round now. Mike's always done a great job, and it's important to the town that he does it. During a storm, he's always here, he's the guy that, when we get a weather report that says it's going to be icy at 2:00 in the morning, that his wife can testify that he's out at 1:30 checking the roads to make sure that they're not frozen, so we get to stand around. This is the stuff no one realizes, and there's a lot more that goes unseen. He does this always with a great sense of humor and compassion for residents. Mike grew up in North Cituit, graduated from Cituit High School in class of 76. Mike has a long storied career that includes playing hockey, coaching hockey at Cituit High School, and even worked at the WWF, I don't know how many people realize that. He can tell you some stories about Andre the Giant sometime you get going. But I think he's most proud of his biggest accomplishment, which is his family, his wife, all of his here, daughter, and mother, he's here, and Katie. So I want to thank Mike for 25 years, and he's given to the town, and hope that he plans to work for another 25, and I don't know how we could replace him, so thanks, Mike.
I just want to say, I'm so happy to be working in the town, and it's just a great town, and I want to thank everybody in the community, the select board, and everybody at Town Hall, and everyone in the community. When Holly and the girls had a fire, and the town came up enormously financially and supportive in every possible way, and we're very, very grateful for that, and thank you very much. I'm really glad Nancy holds you, Kevin, for letting me send you the snow before. Thank you very much, you guys.
Warm, warm. You're not getting away yet.
I have to say this, not often do you get an email from a resident saying, I have to tell you about what great work someone did. It's the first time, so after a storm cleanup, this person came, nicest gentleman, nicest guy, he was so helpful, and he was like, we don't always get all those all the time, but it's so great that residents know how thoughtful and caring you've been, and good sense. Definitely worth it, so.
You know, well said, well, Mike, you were infamous to me before you got started with the town because of your hockey reputation, right? Those guys that I used to work with, so always hear about Mike Green, and I'll tell you, you just exceeded all my expectations when I met you, and I will say that you were probably one of the most accessible town employees to the residents. You know, everybody knows your name, everybody knows that you'll come out and help them out, and your dedication to service is just exemplary, and you're fabulous, and we're so fortunate to have you, and just want to say thank you, congratulations. I'd like to say, you know, whenever you look around your own house, and you see, oh, got to get the guy to come plow the driveway, got to get someone to go and walk, or something has to be fixed, it's an endless, endless, endless task. You multiply that by a whole town, it's, it's an amazing thing that you do, and I want to thank you and all the members, especially the wood departments, you know, you make the town look beautiful. I know many people commented, you've got a beautiful economy when we had the Memorial Day celebration, and you know, I think people don't always appreciate how hard it is to keep this town looking as good as it does, so thank you very much.
And my hiring, it's great for you. You get to work for Mike.
The only thing I admire is, you know, we can talk about the great work that you do, but it's really the type of person that you are. I've never heard anybody say a bad thing about you, never, whether it's a citizen, but most importantly, all the people that work with you. You know, people that work on all the different sports teams, people that work with different town departments. You bend over backwards to help people get their job done easier, you take pride in your work, and you're just a good person that really is completely unselfish, and really just gives, you know, gives yourself to the community and to other people, it's, it's amazing. And it is noticed, and everybody in town knows that about you, and so do we, and all I can do is congratulate you for it. Just for the good of, a good person that, that really doesn't get caught up in the red tape, and knows right from wrong, and really gets things done, right? If that field needs to be mowed, you're not going to, you know, you're going to get someone to put a mullet, so that if you know what's going on in the town, and the kids need doing whatever they have to do, so I really appreciate that about you, and really asking for the town every year, and over here for another 25 years.
I totally appreciate it, all of it, thank you so much, it's uncomfortable, but thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mike, we have a little something for you, if you're all right.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming in. Alright, our next agenda item is a donation and a contract. Please, Chief Mark Thompson.
Evening again. So Sergeant Wolfman is here with me as well, our K9 officer, and what is it? What was the donation is? Oh, this donation was, this is your right man. Toys they do, for the state, that's Brian, new K9, Brett, just recently shared, two years old, so we're trying to reach out, go around $2,000, this rough, rough thing, and they asked me to, but yeah, I thought it was a really nice gesture of them, Brett down to one of the club leaders that introduced him, so they had some pressure, they didn't, they didn't really see much of what the K9 program was, so it was kind of it was a nice little, uh, presentation we did, and it's impressive, it's fantastic, we love it. We're fortunate to have generous people in the town, and, you know, just like our officers, we don't have losing protection, and it's going to be true. Brett was just another of the officers, so.
What's his name?
Brett.
Correct.
So this was incredibly generous and thoughtful of the right man, of the sense of office.
Mr. Jack?
Yes?
I don't really know, I know we have a K9, and then we did not. So could you tell everyone else here about the dog?
Oh, so, so I'll be talking about Tango, we retired about a little over a year ago.
Right.
And we recently purchased a new dog, it was a donation through the Law Foundation in Mass Festing Month. And we got the dog, the donation, it's at a way to school for about 16 weeks. Graduated from the 16th Academy through the law corrections, and was put out over the street, so around the middle of July this year. So he's currently training constantly, and monthly training and daily training within the department, and for all three regions with different K9s and teams. And that's kind of where we kind of, every time we get a new dog, we have to get on that avenue for people listening to that. And they have a shelf life on, and bro, same as I, about five years or so. And the cost is going up, not as bad as I thought it would be, but it's, it's been going up over the past, I don't know, a lot of the time. It's gone off the basket either, so I thought it was nice to do that, we, we have to buy a lot of equipment, equipment is quite costly. We try to get for lots through the grants, through the Mass Festing Month grants, so that's very generous, it's kind of a scale to go on. All the foundation, really been helping for us, so thank you for that. We've got a lot of other equipment that we've gotten through grants, is our insert, the cruiser, so if we have a regular cruiser that we have taken out of line, we put an insert in, it's around $3,800. Now with new cruisers comes new inserts because of the design of the cruiser, so that'll be kind of our next task in a few years, if we have to upgrade our cruiser, we'll have to do that, but we'll be seeking assistance to be on Mass Festing Month as well, so we're trying to keep there all across town, and people in town over the years, and years, and years, very generous with the purchase of our past K9s, relying heavily on all the donations for that, and townspeople are very generous, they grant, they grant, and we get to, one to us, to help us bring, so.
So people in town want to donate, is there a special foundation that sends attention, or is it?
There is a special fund, it's the K9 Year Fund.
And they should send it to Town Hall?
We could send it to Town Hall, and before the slide portion, when he accepted and advised the contractor. They, I'm sure they would be like, as soon as we can get that amount for, for us to get it, that's better.
Yeah, I'm sure a lot of people would be happy to, so even a small donation, it all adds up.
Yeah, it definitely adds up, you said, it said.
I have the dog, I see.
He's a Belgian Malinois. I bring him in, but I get my nicer phone on. No, I bring him in sometimes, if you like, just on a phone, like I said, I had a number of local people, he's very social. Yeah, so whenever you, whenever you'd like to do something that, talk to him, he's, we'll put him at the table there, and you can lie, and it's very, very sociable dog.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it'd be great, so yeah, he's, he's great, and we'd be doing, the next one's coming around, so we'd be doing some more demonstrations, we do a lot of the rent pocket and schools. So we have different toys at our station, and from there, and we try to set things up, work it out, we're doing a tour of the station, we usually do the the K9 demonstration out back as well, so kids get to see that. Yeah, we, it's been great, like, so we provide, a lot of the town local people helped us, different animal hospitals donating, across West Kansas, so people are really very thoughtful, and we very appreciative, that's how we, we've been, he's aligned for us, 16, 17 years now, so.
The work you do is hard work, trying to get, you know, precise.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion of acceptance? Yes.
The select board accept a donation of $400 to go towards the Cituit K9 Fund.
Seconds.
Mr. Murphy, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, 4 to 0. And I would just note that Karen Gantil was unable to make it this evening, which is a pride of mine. Thank you.
Thank you to the right man, so.
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate it. So Mark, why don't we go over the 4th of July stuff next, and move into that contract?
Sure.
Thank you.
So we have our annual coming for you for the 4th of July, and so Chief Murphy and I spoken before, and thought it was a good opportunity, holding 7 out, and just kind of talk about the things that we like to go over and remind people of, and I think over the years, we've made steady progress in terms of the particular for 4th of July, it's like, this year will be a little bit different, the way that it falls, so it's going to be a long weekend. We're anticipating a long, fun, safe weekend, and our focus is going to be on, you know, family enjoyment, we know a lot of people want to come to town post-COVID, which is going to change things, and we'll see rain in the past couple of years, so we're looking forward to a lot of that coming together, so I know I have a couple of things that I just want to touch on from the police side, and then I'm sure Chief Murphy has a number of things related from the safety side, and the fire side, too, to deal on, so fireworks are legal, just want to make sure we can remind everybody it's not like some of the other states, so although they're easily accessible, and often times part of the 4th of July fun, we want to find the danger of that, and that they are. Public drinking, public consumption marijuana, underage drinking, all of those things that tend to cause those problems and cause disorderly behavior. We want to make sure that people keep things, control, prevent residents and things. Again, family fun, we've had problems in the past with folks from out of town, particularly your parents just coming and dropping off carloads of kids at beaches. There are no pre-planning public events in terms of fireworks displays or anything else in town, so parents should just be mindful of where their kids are and what they're doing, and it has been a big difference over the years, we have hundreds of kids for example, sending one on Rock Beach. Parking restrictions, all the things that we normally have in place will be out in force, we'll have actual patrols throughout the course of the weekend, and our focus will be on maritime business districts, and on the water as well, and it has been the case over the past couple of years, Operation Pride Water goes on, which is the combination of Massachusetts Fire Police, Environmental Police, State Police, Coast Guard, and Cituit Police, part of the master martial police dish, kind of a conservative effort, along the waterways to locate the UI. So that's specifically targeted and planned for that mechanic, so we want to keep that in mind as well. And I guess the only other thing I would mention in the term of review by Chief Murphy is we don't anticipate closing beaches at this point, but again, as we always, safety dictate whether or not something comes up, and whether or not they have to take your street and close if something happens, so that's now, and for any fun, and for the safety.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, I think Chief and I obviously agree, and we want to make a fun, safe weekend, 12th July, it's not much doubting, officially, so we do know it's going to be a long weekend, 12th July on Sunday, so we're going to be probably three days of people having fun doing stuff, and bring a little bit more challenge to public safety, so let this paper, here's a personal, on Friday night, Saturday, Sunday. Especially on Sunday night, by Sunday night, you get a little tired, and that's the thing, but so again, there's no bonfire allowed, we will allow on Sunday night, we will allow small campfires, just be smart about it, make sure it's on the beach. Use clean wood, no pallets, because they may be able to stay at the beach behind the next day, the beach closed, and be safe, it's not about that, we're not resuscitated, we're not down, but it's responsible, you know, people live on the house, front of the house, it's responsible, right, it's a small campfire. We do, they have these small lanterns now, and becoming very popular, which are very game, especially you get a sea breeze, and you got these things up, and they go to the wind, they can go on for miles, and if they can wind on, then, you know, the wind is something Jaz can tell, so we just really ask, they stay away from those, and you know, we talked about last year, that's not, that's been earlier, if you have people in Dallas, especially, somebody's got a rose down Elmarock, make sure we have access to the home for the indoor firefighting, we can get through, so again, it's not for people that are having gifts over, that people can get through, we can get through with public safety, to make sure that they're safe, if they have a fire, an accident, or an emergency, we can actually gain access to them. Other than this, we want to have a fun safe weekend.
And Chief, any questions?
My question.
What?
Do we still, uh, close down in the, Alexis, do we still close down on Rock Beach, or did we stop doing?
So, we kind of altered plans midway through last year, because the traffic wasn't what we anticipated. I think we'll look at that again this year, and we probably won't be able to close it down to the level that we have in the past.
So you just like to call that.
Yeah, I, I think as of right now, though, that we won't be sure of that as much, we really try to work on the restaurants and businesses down there.
Yeah, I, I think as of right now, though, that we won't be sure of that as much, we really try to work with the restaurants and businesses down there. But understanding that was prohibitive for that to. So I think at this point, we're not going to look at that, I think one of the things that Chief Murphy would do again is, we're looking at a long, prolonged stretch here, over four days. And I think that that's going to be different than that, I don't know, the one thing is going to be four days, but it's going to be four days. So we might not necessarily see a total peak on the third, we might see things kind of distributed more, even maybe this time during the winter. So that will, if we find we have to do something in real time, we will, but otherwise, I think try to keep things going as fast as possible.
We can load a little time, even, so that, I guess, it's a bit bad because people spread out, but maybe we'll look at it, seventy-nine, eleven, two.
Any other parking anything for other areas besides Almarot that are, I think, concerned, sand, also.
I know it's everywhere.
Millions of them now, and you can go down, down Almarot, there are lots of them now, but yeah, they could happen any of us, so, but it's, we typically get a, look out for that early on. In the evening, if you have a problem, try to let people go listen, get a breakfast, for it to start, because it's a challenge.
So then you said it's tied to the question, so it is low tide?
Low tide, like Friday, seven, eight, nine o'clock on Sunday.
That's good, amen, right?
Yeah, if people roll, you know, if they want to have them down, it's good. But I think it's moving.
And that's one of the things too, that that opens up the spin, it's another area for us a concern, because those tides are going to be in favor for, it's beautiful, a lot of the spin in the evening. The tide support that, so we'll have that as another area of concern.
Chief Murphy, the, you said no bonfires, but you said we can be small campfires. Can you describe to people what a small campfire is?
So if they recommend less than three feet wide, they try to say use stones around if you can, then you don't want to, maybe what a entire eighteen inches, you want to use clean wood, just dirty wood, or a wet wood, breathes a lot of smoke. Pallets are very dangerous too, they burn very quickly, and they stay between eyes, so just three feet wide, small campfire. Clean wood, just trying to spot, like, a bucket of water on, it's also, it's very risky. So again, responsibility in the home, in front of the house, and then we're allowing that, but they, I gotta make sure it's safe, especially with children around.
And Chief Thompson, more touchdowns in terms of shutting, I mean, Almarot seems to be the place where most people cover their armed position. You know, the other areas are, are more situated, residence. Are you going to have extra units down there, or is that typically, is that the game plan, that's, I'm not opposed to shutting it down, do you?
So we, every year, we put on a tremendous amount of officers to cover, particularly the third, we're finding that the fourth is becoming much so. So we'll have extra officers on through the entire weekend, much more so in the Almarot area. What we typically had done, which is what we carry over from year to year, was that actually Almarot Square turned into a booking and processing area. Because we've had such a large quantity of PCs in arrest throughout that area, so we really had that shut down to deal with that. What we've found over the course of the past several years, we fortunately haven't had to have that. So that was kind of a little bit of the shift that we found last year, with people wanting to have access to that.
And Chief, you know, in situations typically the third and Almarot typically the, you know, the.
The, it's the epic, it's the epic center. In, in working with Chief Javaris, in public safety, we're in Marshville too, that's something we really want to collaborate on, because we understand that whatever we do on our side winds up having an impact for them. If we clear the beach, they're headed to Marshville and vice versa, so we really try to work collaboratively with them to understand that is. And I think one of the other things, we owe it to Chief Murphy to touch on too, we have information collateral that we put out every year on social media, our websites, we try to distribute to businesses. So we'll really make sure that we get out of that as well, so people have a better understanding of that one.
Well, you've both been doing this for a long time, we have complete confidence in you, and if you need any resources from us, just let us know.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything else? Great, thank you, yes?
Thank you. Twenty-four, we'll see you.
Thank you. Now we have a contract. Didn't realize, I just placed the, the ticket, I, I'll go ahead.
Sure, absolutely. So this is basically a continuation from town meeting, we had a capital project approved at town meeting, we had the funds available. Since that time, we've been really working to try to move forward with this project in anticipation of the summer. Really looking at the efficiency of this technology we do. We had an opportunity to vet and have a number of conversations with technology companies that deliver, not only license plate recognition, they're calling it, really the parking management. And for us, the concern was how the technology is going to be delivered, how is it going to be implemented, but really how those two can be married together so that the process becomes as seamless as we possibly can get for the officers, but then also on the backside, or how things go through for capturing the data and then getting people to have any of this marketing data they need for it, and then for Nancy and, and the folks who like to bring all the money in, how that is all going to flow together. So it was a pretty exhaustive process in terms of looking at what technologies were out there. And one of the things we really tried to look at was the temporary ecosystem for the technology within the police department, and talking like, and tell them how that would look like. So not just today, but three, five years from now, as our vehicles really become a part of technology. So there's a lot of opportunity to do things, but we got to really kind of drill down and come down with a solution that was going to solve parking management tasks. And I think the solution that we have here through Motorola is really going to do that. The other side of it, with the integration of the parking management, John Brady's office is where our parking tickets have ultimately gone to, and handles so much of the collections from the town. We looked at a number of different solutions, we had an opportunity to work with them, and we've now found that that's going to be the best way to move this forward in terms of ultimately how the funds are going to be collected. So they've been fantastic, over the course of the past one or two, with kind of some pre-sales, some data integration. And I think it allows for continuity from the town level for a vendor that the town already works with, how all the other collections are happening, so we're able to continue that as opposed to introducing other vendors to mix and come with the vehicle. So with that said, Motorola is a state contract vendor, Nancy, Nancy has obviously been particularly helpful, putting this together and getting us to this point. So I think the contract we had, we had before you, basically covers that, it's four to three A L P R, parking management component that allows us to do integration in addition to the support that I think needs to come along with it, installation of the vehicle, and will really give us a good job and onslaught. So where we sit now, this is going to be able to turn around very quickly. With the parking management side, we can do electronic citations, electronic parking things. We're saying that we're going to be up with even the first page of this project in the first couple of weeks. And then we start rolling up, and also the three, four A L P R, so I don't think it will be perfect for July one, for sure. But all the pieces are going to start to come together and grow, which is some of the C A efficient, which is going to continue to change.
Questions for Chief?
No, here's my question, I wasn't clear about parking the other vendor. Yeah, I guess what can someone expect to happen to them if they're violating, especially, I think most people probably think that the beach was all, no, whole parkway is a white box opportunity for taking people, so will they get a ticket on their car, or will it be sent to them?
So from the, the kind of the user experience, it doesn't really change all that much in terms of how that happens. They will still wind up with a paper ticket on their machine. So for them, to a certain extent, we wanted to make sure that there's kind of a continuation of that, because that's what people understand. And it's not just that your car got fired by somebody, so, you know, loaner or something, it is actually something here of value that you want to look at and it's important.
Will they get something in the mail, or will they get something?
It will physically be on their car, just as now, so you'll have a site.
If they don't have it, they'll get it from something in their home.
Yes.
They won't be able to register their car, or whatever, if they.
All of those things continue to flow through, and that's one of the things with, you know, John Brady's office as well, they have all of that infrastructure in place as well. They're tied in with the registry, being able to process that, so.
Is that Clint Kelly? John Brady?
That's the deputy clerk here here on First Parish.
Oh.
We had actually, yeah, we had actually looked at a solution that Clint Kelly did as well. They've done a lot of work with that, and we were, we're kind of close with how that was working, and then some conversations kind of continued with the deputy clerk's office in town, which really.
You're going to use the deputy clerk. Oh, I know where he is, like, I'm with the, it's like a, with a royal plaque or something. Okay.
So this has been something too, that I think with, with any project that you do, a lot of times it's, it's the product, but it's also the people that kind of come along with it. And that's really something that we found thus far, as we started to put these pieces together, is we've got a number of people from kind of project, in terms of each of the different components of this that are working really well together, which is incredibly helpful, and it, it has the potential to kind of get a bunch of dollars to do.
Any question?
No, no.
I just have one more question, what was, what did Tommy ask that you have to?
Eighty-five thousand two hundred? Eighty-two thousand five hundred, sorry, okay. So we have a couple of pieces that still go along with this, there's a hand health component, that will allow us to do a couple of hand health forms for officers on bikes or who are walking. But it's outside of this, it's really just a hard way to believe in, so that's separate from this contract.
But it's going to be under.
It's, it also, it's within that allocated budget.
Great, can I have a motion?
Move to, move to order contract to vigilance solutions, develop safe, the purchase of automated license plate readers and parking management system, they now have seventy-one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Senator Mr. Murphy, any further discussion, any questions to the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is four to zero. Great, thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much, we appreciate all your time tonight. Yeah, taking a lot of meetings.
All right, so now we have a joint attorney and permanent request.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes?
We have a public hearing tonight that starts at seven fifteen, or a little beyond. We have actually two public hearings in the morning. Unfortunately, we'll have to ask for.
Yes. Okay. So we have, Karen, I'm sorry, the, the deputy clerk is here. So we'll be just, we're going to do this public hearing now, because time is straight, and then I'll get to you right after. Sorry for the delay. The first one is a public hearing, transfer of an annual package license, one in malt, to New Harbor Corp., F D A, Dr. Way General Store.
Sure, my name is Matt Porter, I'm the attorney for New Harbor Corp.
Hey, my name is Malap Patel, and I'm from the order of the, partner of the New Harbor Corp.
So before the board, this is the transfer of the wine malt license that was recently granted at F D A New Drive Way in Situate. Along with me is Malap Patel, who's the president of New Harbor Corporation, along with us tonight as well. Like, is Shiv Patel, Shiv along with three Patel make up the three shareholders of the corporation. Malap would be the license manager as well, and he'd be on site forty hours a week. All three individuals are certified, certainly any employees that will be employed there will be required to be certified as well. It will have a scanning machine in place, Mr. Patel's been managing a large store in Brockton for the last couple of years. So he certainly understands the obligations and his responsibilities from the law, for the sale of alcohol, that no violations whatsoever at that location. They run an extremely tight ship, they'll be there forty hours a week, otherwise, there's no changes to malt target for the morning. Hours will remain the same, I think we for life in town, all right, there's no change until four a.m. and then presented, so. Fairly straightforward, just transferring here to my license. With that, I can certainly answer any questions one may have.
Yeah, before I leave the board, Professor Patel, can you just tell some of your background and your intentions?
Sure, so I, as Mr. Porter explains, is I manage the store in Brockton, a packed store, a full pack sort of delivery. And that's like a fee manager for a nice three years, I have assistant managers also there in place to, you know, help out in that location. And now I'm shifting my focus to Situate, so I'm back and put my forty dollars here to, you know, manage it one smoothly for this location.
Great. Over to the board?
I think it's almost Stonehill Kids in all of the Rock, so.
No, I was glad to hear that you're putting a scanning system in store, so thank you, there's always, you know, a lot of questions up here if we do that. And I'm surprised how quickly this all transferred, I didn't realize it opened itself so quickly, congratulations.
Yeah, so, sorry, Aaron Cutler, I had the owner of the property, I was, I didn't know if I, if I could really operate it, I, I think you're much better, Aaron, so.
So just a couple of things, I, I just want to, more touch on it quickly, we're really happy that you have the license, but we do take serving minors very seriously in the town, we do have strict guidelines. If you do get violations, you will get penalized, so please take that as seriously as you can. Yep, and I'm sure you do it at your current facility. You said forty hours a week, the store's going to be open about eighty hours a week, Chris, how, how are you going to manage it?
So, so we have a couple of the applications in mind, that, you know, the assistant manager position, right, and you're currently contributing that, you know, so. And they have, the, the, put that position requires to have past experience with, in their period wine or package store. And they have that, so we keep that in mind before we how to, uh, assist.
And will they be chip certified?
Yes, correct, yeah, they will be too, so.
And that's, it's a whole convenience store too, so it's not just.
Yes, correct, yes.
Yeah, sure, you know, it's, it's a very scenic place in town, we want to stay in the interval, I'm sure Amber mines, issues on the planning board. You know, we want to keep that area as nice as possible, so, you know, it looks great, so, good job. I'm going to rant for one second, which then I'll, I'll pass this, but I do always have a bit of a problem when we give a liquor license to somebody for free and they sell it to somebody for thirty thousand dollars, and that is something that I have a pet peeve about. I know it's legal, I know it's, it's, it's an asset, but it really kind of broke me the wrong way, and then somebody went for it, so we give them one of our liquor licenses and then they turn it itself off them.
I, I bought them for thirty-nine.
Well, you did too, right, so I bought it.
Oh, I saw it.
So, and you're selling, I don't remember exactly where you're.
No, I was just trying to get my money.
So again, my rant, and clearly you were probably in a difficult, so. That being said, I will open up to any questions from, from the audience. Seeing none, one more question, maybe one should open.
So we're planning to open somewhere in mid of July, so.
And right in?
So basically, our next agenda is a forty-four, uh.
Are you running the gas operations also?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so you're doing both the gas camps?
And food?
Uh, yeah, I mean, so the, the deli side is separate, it's completely a separate business, our, it's a separate.
The deli, it's, inside?
Inside the, inside the facility, yes, they do.
You're going to lease that out to somebody else?
Uh, yes, yes.
But it's, yeah, license.
Oh, nothing on the thin, like the other.
It's like a barbecue.
It's going to survive, I'm saying.
I don't forget, Mark.
That's, that's in the, the store portion, and there's a second portion, that's not in a deer face, it's going to be a lucky, you are, you should get it from a house. So we look at it to the left is the street, to the left is, it's outskirts, to the right is where the lucky gets down.
So who's getting it counted, the places?
They all move them, but they're each individual piece.
And you've been working on that all over the country?
So we should.
You submitted that application.
I think she had her questions, did we put her?
Yes, yes.
I didn't even, I don't believe that required of what we're here, if I'd asked.
Some comments?
No, didn't.
No, we not.
Which is your question?
But my question is, it says discuss about common gift license, it doesn't have anyone's, but these gentlemen here.
Because definitely they don't receive their common gifts from you, and we don't.
So we gave it to the other facility when they divorced.
Yes.
So why are we discussing it?
Because he needed to sell his, his, uh, can we give some of yours?
He's selling packaged toast, cupcakes, and things like that, and his, and his market. Just as an example, yeah.
Fine.
Candy.
Motion?
Please.
Move to approve a transfer of an annual Section fifteen package store lines and malt beverages that forty-eight dash fifty-two, we drive way into the mask. The transfer is from CCO Holdings LLC to New Harbor Corp., New Business as Dr. Way General Store. The premise is four thousand square feet on one floor, two entrances and three exits. Hours of operation for liquor sales are Monday through Saturday from eight a.m. to nine p.m., and Sunday from ten a.m. to nine a.m. But to move on, warehouse and A B C C approval.
Second, second amendment, good reach. Further discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is Janice four zero. One question for the next one, this is the hours of liquor, what's the hours of the store itself?
So that would be six in the morning till nine every day.
Every day, correct, yes.
It's on the next motion down.
Oh, okay. Uh, that, uh, any?
Move to approve a common gift license for New Harbor Corporation, doing business as Driftway General Store. Continuum on board of all approval, with hours of operation six a.m. to nine p.m. Monday through Sunday.
Second, second one, Mr. Goodrich. Further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is Janice four zero. Good luck.
Thank you, great. Thank you, great.
For the next public hearing.
It's at seven thirty, all right?
The next public hearing is seven thirty, all right? Add in post egg baskets, five.
Okay, I think we can get Mr. Detwiler done.
Perfect.
So this is the discussion of the outdoor entertainment permit, seventy-seven, seventy-seven deal game.
Correct.
Okay, fellows, what you doing?
This is an outdoor win for my daughter Kelsey, she's in there.
Congratulations.
So we have, um, summer is at five, be some ambient music, and then we have a band on at ten, and then, and music from ten. I mean, sixty-five people whereabouts, and the apartment and the field, it's nice, uh, we live. Our presentation.
So we both, where's seventy-seven?
You're in.
What is seventy-seven? Oh, is it?
Top of the hill, on the right.
Oh, with the, with the nice tractor and the, how many else is back from, uh, three A?
Um, off of three A, it's probably, well, it's on Riverside, so it's probably, I don't remember, what is it, one, two, three, four, five?
Okay. Five, five, just.
I'm sure we'll be using music.
I know you're, you know, you're.
No, no, I was, I was just thinking about market.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, oh, we don't know how this counts, so I'm doing.
Those enough here, one character.
We need to watch this, great, no problem.
Great, any questions?
I just, I saw your letters, do you notice any, any, uh, pushback?
No, no, mostly invited, so it's.
There you go, that's fine.
Questions? Great, can I have a motion?
Sure. Uh, move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Anthony Detwiler, seventy-seven deal eight. Street.
Street.
For wedding ceremony on July twenty-third, twenty-two point five p.m. until nine p.m.
Second, second one, Mr. Goodrich. Further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is Janice four zero. Have your time, thank you, folks.
Congratulations.
Karen? How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. I have a request for a entertainment license at your house for July sixteenth.
We do.
Also that.
We are having a celebration, we're secretly, that's very big thing first week this year, so we decided. And they do something this year, I was in somewhere, you know, White World again, so we are having tents, music, lighting too. Um, food trucks, all of the, all of the food trucks etc. will be on property, probably just about three or five people. About sixty of that is family, all of those cars will be off premises and parks. At three D R B E's and yeah, so we've got, spread out every yard. Neighbors have offered to help us, um, take on some cars, so it's estimated that we'll have cars parked. Um, half of the meeting house, I mean, the cemetery. They don't hear. I am, I am. So, that's pretty much it, it starts at six, um, maybe until ten, maybe until ten thirty, if somebody asks for permission. That's pretty much it? Pretty much.
But you almost have to use a van, instead of.
Eighteen twelve piece van.
Twelve piece van?
Twelve piece van, uh, Robinson and both. Both south.
Would be four texts?
I'm.
Would be four texts? Great, any questions for Karen? Nope, can I have a motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Karen, so you can purchase thirty-six meeting house line. A private party on July sixteen, twenty twenty-two, from six p.m. until one thirty p.m.
Second one, Mr. Goodrich. Further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is Janice four zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have your time. All right, now we have another public hearing, it's on a hold position, and we are gonna call.
National Grid, will be remote, and tell us how you should be there.
Hey, Jose, it's the great Dylan, how are you? Good, I'm gonna put you on speaker, okay? We're just waiting for the DPW here, here, come in, hold on. Okay, you're on speaker.
We're gonna work speaking to the residents.
Hi, Jose, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you very much.
Good.
I'm just, I'm gonna talk, I'll hold it back, and the national grid.
Yes, hold on for one second, let Kevin chat. Great, can you tell us, um, what National Grid is doing?
Sure, um, yeah, we're proposing to call a new joint league hole, um, between existing hole nine and hole ten on the driftway. Um, the purpose of this hole is to, uh, provide electrical start serving gas stations going in, I believe address is forty-eight dash fifty-two.
Okay. So I'm just looking at the map here, so it is hole P nine dash fifty, that's the new one?
Yes, correct, and new hole number will be, um, labeled with nine dash fifty, um, in between, because we already have a nine and a ten. And I guess we can, um, we need a new hole to provide the three phase driver, um, that can open the gas station and be a three phase high market transformer.
And there's no way to just add that to hole nine, that's just the existing hole?
Well, cause, um, currently that, um, that hole has a transformer as equipment on it, so there's no way we can do a double build there, so. That's why we need a new clean hole, just because of the safety, um, of adding those power lines and spreading it out on the cross arms.
Okay, this is right in front of the. So.
So if you look at the current, the building, hole nine is almost directly in front of the doors. There's no way to get the wires to the side, this hole would be just to the left of the building. The wires would go down the pole, I should go underground the building, so they line up with electrical circuits on the building.
And they're gonna go underground?
Uh, it's my understanding it'll go down underground, but nothing, I don't think.
Yeah, they're gonna go underground. My, my one question, Jose, is, do you have to rip up part of the new sidewalk that just went in? Can you put it just on the outside of that, or do you have to go in that in the sidewalk?
Uh, well, the, the reason why we, unfortunately, we do have to rip it up, I, I actually spoke with them and. I was kind of, I was kind of, didn't know why they didn't inform us that they were gonna do that, because, yes, unfortunately, we do have to rip it, cause. The whole purpose is we're trying to capture the existing line. Um, so we need to kind of be a little bit under it, and we can't put it too far off the sidewalk. Cause we're gonna capture the existing lines, um, that are already overhead there, to not, um, do too much, you know, change in the road. Um, so unfortunately, yes, we're gonna have to rip it to that sidewalk, and we'll have to repair it, um, back to, you know, what it was.
So, so one that is, we're gonna have to use, we're gonna have to match it the best we can, or otherwise. And same finish and, and everything else, replace the entire panel.
That's correct.
So anything you can do to, to try to avoid that would be, would be great for everybody, because not only is it a cost to you while you're doing it. Um, it's an aesthetic one for us, because we have a nice, uniform, brand new sidewalk in there, we have two different colors in it in that section. Which just.
Yes, I know, it looks amazing, unfortunately, they have the paint on it, but yeah, we'll try our best. I did take over it to provide it and show them, um, so, you know, the, the bills, and anything that they can do, if they can get it off the road. They will try their best right now, um, just standard line, and, um, that's the best location right now. Uh, maybe I'll, we'll feel when they get there, you know, to start to do it, and maybe it'll work out better.
Just be aware, we wanna be there when you do it, and it's, you know, uh, reinforcement and everything else inside there, and we're gonna be stickless to matching it the best we can. It would be move you to try to avoid it.
Okay, yes, I'll take that as consideration, I'll try to see if, uh, we can do it, you know, maybe along the cross arm or something. Um, and if we can, you know, accommodate that. I, I was trying to score once to get it more on the customer's property, and I wanted to, like, avoid it and get a evening, instead of coming to the town and petitioning for the pole. Uh, just because the wires are so far away, it, it kind of made it difficult to make that happen, so that's why I, I, I believe the best plan is gonna be, unfortunately, um, on the sidewalk. Between those two times where I marked the pole.
Okay, I think Kevin got his point across. One, one thing that I wanna add is, um, we've had some problems with National Grid putting poles in the middle of sidewalks. And we do not want it in the middle of the sidewalk. It's gotta be handicapped.
No, that's only, um, I, um, I, I placed it behind it, and obviously, I'm not the one that's gonna stall it, so I'm sure it would be for me as I engineered it. Um, I did place it as far back to get the clearance for any strollers, any wheelchairs and all that, I just, I wanted to make sure you guys had access in the front or bike or, you know, pedestrians walk, we're like, did try to stretch that and put as far back as I could.
Right, so can we get, get your, um, agreement that you'll have someone from DPW with you? And that they can, they can agree on the spot of it, so that it doesn't go in the middle and we don't have to ask you later?
Well, I, I, I made the mark already, but yeah, I'm willing to meet with Kevin or whoever else would like to meet out there. Um, and, you know, just seeing, well, I did paint it in the sidewalk, they wanna give me a call if they don't agree, or if they wanna change it. Way more expensive to cover than I'm willing to do.
Great, we went out there today, where it's marked, there's sufficient room for people to get by, if they go in from the street, that is even more, so as long as they don't put it closer to the road than where they have to mark, it should be fine.
Can I make one other request? When you bring one of these to us, can you take a picture of your marking? In a, a live, which I just tried to Google it, and it showed me that, a Napa store. Um, so, and we're looking at a diagram that doesn't really give us much feedback, so if you can take a, a photograph of what you're, where you're gonna put it. It'll give us a little bit better perspective.
Okay, for future, I can do that, absolutely, or even after this, I can, uh, probably email Lorraine a picture or something, but yeah, definitely, that, that, I can add that like a magic pack or something, that'll be fine for future, but you got to kind of see, uh, the landscape, that's actually a good idea, I don't have a mission on that.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I just wanna say that while we're still talking about telephone poles and poles, because you have new construction and things should be going underground, uh. It's just, it's silly. Sorry, Jose.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Chair, uh, we just got a call from Driftway Medical. Michelle is just conveying their concerns to me, that they don't want the telephone pole to block their sign.
Is, have they looked at the mark?
Not to my knowledge.
It's not human, is it?
They want their concern on the record.
But it's, it's down the street from them, isn't it?
I believe so, I don't know who their service.
It's not, I don't think it's either.
Jose. I mean, I think we can connect Jose with Driftway Medical to resolve the issue, or discuss the issues, that's, you came with me.
Oh, I, I know what you're talking about, yeah, yeah, I was thinking of the medical building on the square. You're talking about the, for the one.
Yeah.
I know, you said.
Do you want to ask Jose if we can connect them?
Yeah, Jose, can we connect you with them, so that you can go over it, going to make sure it doesn't block the visualization of their sign?
Okay, there's always that blue sign that kind of set back, yeah, I don't, I don't think it'll do with a block pad, but yeah, that's not a problem.
Yeah, it's just, this is one of those things, when, when it goes in, we never get them moved, so we got one chance to get it right.
Well, I have a, yeah, and I, if I were to try to put it more onto the customer's property, that it'll definitely be an infringement on their sign with this one. You kind of already have, like, uh, I think there's like a bike path sign, and then there's something else, I'm putting it in between two existing, um. So shiv and block their, uh, their sign is a setback about twenty feet or something from the road, so I don't know if it'll block their signs.
Okay, great, if you.
Yeah, if you got to email me their information, and I'll, you know, give them a call.
Yeah. We're looking at it right now, it looks like it may block their sign. Uh, yeah, if you can get together with them, that'll be great. Kevin, you know. Yeah. Yeah, I can see where it's sorry.
I looked at it, I did not look at their sign.
Yeah, all right. So can we put that in your hands to make sure that we? So we can.
I wa, I want it off the sidewalk, but yeah, well, I mean, if Jose reached out to them, okay, they have the meeting for everybody.
Great, Jose, when are you gonna put this in? When is it gonna be installed?
Uh, well, we need permission from you guys, and then we're trying to get it done as soon as possible, the customers kind of been waiting for a while, and I guess there was some issue with the paperwork, but. Um, you know, probably wouldn't be for a couple of weeks, at least, just to get on the schedule, but we definitely wanna, the ball rolling on it sooner than later. And like, also, in that situation, if it does affect the sign, we could, it, it, the placement, we can work with, like, we can move a ten feet to the left, or. You know, we have wiggle room to move it, it's just, I tried to find a spot that kind of didn't infringe too much, so we do have wiggle room to move the pole, ten feet to the left, to avoid blocking their sign, if that works for them.
Yeah, I think that's Kevin's.
Well, it's just that part, that it kind of feeds straight into the side of the building, kind of where their power is gonna go. And if they have to go a little bit of an in, I'm pretty sure they'll be okay, just that, you know, just so they can get power, they're very anxious about.
So, do you want to vote to pass it, based on all these qualities?
Yeah.
Agree on where it goes? Make sense? Can I, can I have a motion with that in it?
Uh, move to approve National Grid plan three zero five, three zero nine, eight H, install one new pole at forty-eight fifty-two, new driftway. After consultation and agreement by DPW and. EB, but. But sure.
Second. Second one, Mr. Goodrich. Further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is Janice four zero. Thank you, Jose.
Oh, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Jose, I'll get in touch to you with, uh.
Yeah, so, thank you so much for everything, yeah, well, definitely follow up with that company and make sure everything's good.
Okay.
And I'll see you guys.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Aye, thank you.
Thanks. Good night, Steve. Our next item on the agenda is a new special event, at the time of the conference. Jessica, how are you?
Good, how are y'all?
Good.
Excuse me, I need a mic.
Okay, so tell us about the great players.
Yeah, so I have a lot to talk to you guys about, actually. Um, so we're having two summer reading pickoffs this year, um, our first in a couple of years, and we're really excited. Um, the first one is, um, the one for kids, it's gonna be on the twenty-ninth, um, from five to eight a.m., but really the event is till seven. Um, and we might just have to speed a little time to break down. Um, and there will be, um, a magician, um, that will be outside, weather permitting, um, and as well as a snow phone. Our lawn being out, should be really fun day, um, so. So that's one we're, we're really, really excited about. The next day is the one for twenty seventeen, we actually have a game truck coming. Um, we're gonna have pizza, we're gonna have a panel, again, weather permitting. Um, we'll have the long games out again, um, for the teens, so we do anticipate a, a smaller turnout for that one. Uh, the children's, um, event can sometimes bring this as much as, um, to kind of draw a remarkable. But it has been a couple years, so, you know, we're, we're trying to get it worked out as well. Um, and then the other thing I have, I don't know if I need to push it to be separately.
Yeah, let's go separately, I guess, on this question.
Yeah.
And that's on Wednesday and Thursday night.
Correct.
Any questions on the, the reading kickoff? Nope?
Yeah. Sounds great.
Awesome.
Want to move on?
Get going, we'll do the. Sure.
Move to approve a specially event permit for the Citutown Library Summer Reading kickoff, held on March twenty-ninth and June thir- thirty, that's twenty twenty-two, five P M.
Second by Mr. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and the next question?
Yeah, so the next is gonna be our summer concert series, again, bringing that back after a couple years. Um, it's, uh, runs on six different Wednesdays, um, and it starts, um, uh, we have five here, but really we put off the games at five-thirty. This year we're gonna have some storytellers, um, to kind of break the ice before the musicians start, that would be six. And then at six-thirty, the musicians will start. They play for about an hour, we ask them to wrap up and we're there at eight o'clock. So we have a huge variety of music, we're doing all international bands, so it's gonna be really fun, and check our website or social media if you, if you wanna learn more. But really excited, those again tend to draw, um, you know, between fifty to two hundred people depending on the band, so.
Did you get anything from the butters? Did you send us?
I did send out a letter about, um, with, with all of these events on them, and I did not hear anything.
Any questions for the second concert series, and that's on Wednesday night also?
Correct.
Well, just for everyone else in the world, everyone's welcome to them, right?
Absolutely, okay, I'm gonna be fun, bring your picnic basket and your bite of spray and have a good time.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering, is it something on a staff crowd, or is there a difference on international bands?
Uh, you know, we get all ages, Curtis, um, so, uh, you know, one thing that we love is all of the residents that live across the street of Lawson. They actually stay or they're, they bring out their lawn chairs and they sit out across the street.
That's great.
Um, but yeah, absolutely, we want the residents from the Central Port Housing and, um, Lawson, we'd love for them to come over, so really it's for our, I mean.
Seniors, welcome, Chris.
Absolutely, there you go. Go to the farmer's market, grab some food and come on over.
Any, any other questions? Any idea, any of the bands that you've selected, can you name a couple of them?
Yeah, so, uh, the first one is, again, we're doing kind of an international name, so the first one is called the Zee Fields Wheel, they're a klezmer band. Um, we also have a Capira band coming, which is, um, Afro-Brazilian martial arts and music, I don't know, I'll have to find out. Um, we have a Japanese drumming band named Steel Drum Band, um, we have a full band as well, so a lot for them.
That's great. What a great idea. Okay, so that's every Wednesday night, starting July sixth through August tenth?
Yes.
Have a motion?
Move to approve a specially event permit for the Citutown Library Summer Content Series to be held on July sixth, thirteenth, twentieth, twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, and August third and August tenth, twenty-twenty-two, for five P M until eight P M.
Second by, Mr. Curran. Further discussions, any questions from the audience? Seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, I hope to see you guys there. Can I ask you something, one quick thing, you know, about the summer concert series? Um, so the friends of the library sponsor all of our programs, but they did a really great job, they raised, um, almost ten thousand dollars for this series, um, and all just within the last two months, so I just really wanna thank them for their, for all of their hard work that.
That's great.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, and maybe you can post that on the town website too?
Oh, absolutely, it's great, yeah, thank you.
Great, the next, uh, topic that we have, discussion vote on a, a special event for the Knights of Columbus carnival. Hi guys, good evening. Before I let you start, I have to say, when I saw this on the agenda, I became a little bit sad because, uh, for, I can't remember how many years Mark Brady came before us and discusses with us.
That's when July second, last year.
Yep, and, uh, he was, uh, really a, a great performer of the Knights of Columbus, loved the community, did so much with this carnival for, I mean, we all have kids that went through, through this with him down there, so I really, personally, I, I really appreciate that, so.
He's a tall act to follow.
Yeah, I'm gonna try and take it over for him, but.
So my name's Carl Warne, Debbie Brandon Knight, and co-chair of the carnival, Mike Ellis James is our board, and also co-chair of the carnival. And, uh, we're here for, uh, approaching our sixty-seventh year, I'll do this for the community. And every year we raise tens of thousands of dollars that we give out to families and, uh, support things like the college funding school, it's our major fundraiser that really gets through the year. Um, for the past few years, we've grown our team, last year was a banner year, but looking to forward to doing this year. Uh, we moved it up from the, uh, we did normal because of extreme high tides that are coming up, the, the winter high tides, it presents a flood. Co-op parkway, they, uh, hazardous for the electrical facilities that we require from operating the park. I haven't written to Michael going underwater. Uh, so we're set with the usual schedule, Tuesday through Sat- uh, Saturday, uh, seven to eleven, we have the, the D P W's, uh, assignment to do that, yes, the shows providing the programs, as well as the fireworks show on the weekend, that's my community innings. If the jury doesn't have a fourth of the life fireworks, we give that back to the town every year, show our appreciation, so. I'd go in there for you. A little bit of board, any, any questions?
No, I'm sorry about Mr. Brady, I'm right, I should've filled, but we'll do it. Thank you for all you do, the Knights, for all of you.
Thank you.
I just can't wait.
Well, Mark, I can't, as you said, it's moved up a week.
Nineteenth to the twenty-third.
Yep. We've never had any issues, so it's always been wonderful, so we're glad we can complete.
Thank you.
It'll continue to go well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the only thing I'll add, that you mentioned, they're all, the Knights, oh, sorry, one second. Um, does so much for the community, whenever there is an issue or a person in need, the Knights is always raising their hand first to, to donate to the stuff and, you know, and, I don't know, that people know all the things you can do behind the scenes, but it's a really charitable organization.
Thank you. We have part of our trackers, we vote profile, we not talk about it.
It is known, so. Ms. Burman?
And we're by, and first of all, I think Peter Dolch was talking to Lomackle. Who for years would be for you for this carnival. And he put a lot of himself into all of this, so if you don't mind, I would really like him to make the.
I, I think that's very appropriate, I was thinking of him right after I said it very well, Bill's come before us decades, and another huge, huge supporter.
He's in the hospital right now, but he's trying to make it out.
Yes, and, uh, Bill was, uh, instrumental in passing the torch to us in negotiations, so everything that's in place and has been a success for years, has been under, under his guidance and with confidence that we can, can conquer these actions.
If we could sign it, he had a look at it this year, so that's how he gets at it.
So Bill, another just stellar citizen.
Yes.
Huge, huge part of the Knights, but also a huge part of the town, you know, he's been on so many boards and really participated in. Just to stay with him.
If I could just add that Bill and Barker was calm checking up on all of you.
From its hospital, yeah. From its hospital, been to make sure we weren't actually doing this.
From rehab, no, I'm serious, from rehab to speak to, make sure they had all their ducks in line. We had all our ducks in line, so he's still very, so nice.
We're hoping he gets home soon and come down at least once in the ninth vote, but the kind of willingness for us to come and see this.
Well, I know I should be through the whole board that we wish them the best, and Steve, you've got earlier. We hope to see him now, I think he and Ruby are a little more often than we are, but, uh. Um, Ward, do you have any questions, sir?
No.
No.
Have a motion?
Please.
Move to approve a specially event permit to the Citutown Knights' club for the annual carnival, July nineteenth through July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. Center will begin July nineteenth and take down on July twenty-third.
Second by Mr. Curran. Further specialty questions from the audience? Seeing none, all favor? Aye, unanimous, four zero. Thank you, good luck guys, and see you now.
Thank you.
And again, posted dates, cause.
Yeah, we'll get it on.
Now that's approved, we'll post, yeah, we're looking on, looking forward on the, uh, on the polls.
Thank you.
The next topic that we're gonna discuss today are changes in the Waterways Commission regulations and the Waterways Fund fee. Uh, Mike Gibbons, if you like.
Good evening, board. How's everyone doing tonight?
Great. Well, so we've seen this before, we've talked about this.
Yes, correct.
Um, I know we made a few tweaks.
Yep, last, last time I was here was May tenth, and we had a couple changes that were requested, uh, one was definitions of houseboat and idle work vessels. Um, then the other thing that was discussed was increasing the penalties of fees relating to, um, commercial workforce that are violating the, the, the work of the society.
Can you review those two things?
Yeah, yes, sure, can. So you have a copy, I, I hope was highlighted? So, I took the same time, I just uplay, updated some of the terms, so just like forward to, uh, to those things. Section eight, which should be on the second page. Um, our I, houseboat means any older vessel designated primarily for a human habitation, dwelling or entertaining, which is not motorized, some households may also be known as chappy boats. So we looked, you know, a bunch of us looked for definitions here and there, uh, in the end we ended up settling on this one, which is the same one that Marshville uses, so.
Any questions on that?
Nope.
So the second definition that we had defined was what is idle equipment, we referenced that in the commercial section of rules regulations, this is a new, new section, and you guys, and rightly so, we need a little bit of the definition, so. Idle equipment means commercial operating equipment that is not actively working on or engaged in a notified project that the situation waters for a year or more than seven days, so if it sits for more than seven days in waters that is not working on a project or engaging in another project. Uh, that's one we would determine that it's idle and, uh, it would need to be moving out of the situation waters for the face matters.
And the second, we call it worth of penalties?
Yeah. So the other pages that we had made changes are, we, we recall, the class of boats, we maxed it at sixty feet, so that, that I'm changing, covered that last time. And then the section on houseboats and ten A floats, um, more, I believe, you had pointed out to me that you wanted to see something a little bit more on the ten A floats in there, so what I did is actually, uh, just took a little bit of the language from Rotherham, you said no structures of any type may be built on M G L chapter ninety-one, ten A designated floats, so that kind of cleaned up the language on that one, it's a little more specific, specific. On the fee, fee structure? For the commercial section, um, we had made the idle equipment fine two hundred and fifty dollars per, per day for the first seven days of non-compliance. And then five hundred dollars per day thereafter. So I have to discuss it with somebody, but we thought that was, uh, about the right amount to go for that.
Um, so, we, we did get a few, um, comments from the public. Who do they contact if they think that someone is, uh, his equipment is violation? Do they call it Harber Master?
Yeah, Harber Master, yeah. Harber Masters, they can go down and speak to whoever, ask the equipment to notify the owner, and, uh, have the discussion with them. And they can obey the regulations, so. Uh, one of the things that we are trying to do with these, these rules, we're trying to make them consistent with Marshville, and we do share the rivers with those guys, to wanna make sure that if we have a rule, it's consistent with one, so, so if there is a violation, then they just can't.
That was just thinking.
Yeah, it just works, it just makes.
Any other questions to move on?
Nope, just two letters of support were, as Karen said, so.
Oh, you mean the letters?
From Rose, yeah, from Rose, yeah. People watch your baby tonight.
Yeah.
Great, well, thanks for making those changes. If there's no other questions, any questions for the audience?
Have a motion?
Please.
Move to approve the Waterways Boarding Poles and Regulations as proposed by the Waterways Commission?
Second by Mr. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
And move to approve Waterways Enterprise fee schedule as proposed by the Waterways Commission? Second.
Second by Mr. Curran. Mr. Curran, okay. Um, further discussion? Seeing none, all favor? Aye, it's unanimous, four zero. Mike, thanks for the hard work, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Every year we make it a little bit better.
Uh, it's a work in progress, all it is.
Have a good week.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, my next topic for discussion is a presentation, discussion and vote on the Beach Commission. Alec Bauer?
No, they are reading down the hall, I'm gonna run downtown and let you read them, if that's okay.
Perfect.
We have to.
I know. How are you, Ian?
Hi, just wanted to say. Well, you said, why don't you just award the contract to the White House?
We could do that, is that what you're hearing?
No. But that's a ten, that's a ten, oh my god.
No, we have, Lorraine has to be here to know.
Oh.
Looking up what the Boston Cambridge Quincy area is for, for the housing. It is almost all of Essex County, Middlesex County, Norfolk County, about half of Plymouth County, and stuff like that.
Can we not have a city? Is it illegal to have a representative meeting? That's not a question.
We might be able to try to switch to Rockland, but the closest town to us in the Rockland group is probably within So town of Duxbury, Hanover, Hingham, all of Easton, Marshville, Lowell, Plymouth, Rockland, Situate, Weyton, we're all in the Boston group, so Boston's an answer board all the way to the gate.
Great, thank you guys for coming in. So we are going to, uh, do a presentation, discussion, vote on the Beach Commission. And it looks like your whole committee's here.
Uh, actually, three of five.
Three of five, good, so if you can introduce yourself and all of them, then we will, it's ready.
Absolutely. Um, we also have a presentation coming up.
Yeah, Seth was gonna put up the presentation. On the board. Thank you, Seth. The man behind the curtain, the wizard.
I don't think that's the first slide.
No. So I'm Alec Bauer, I'm the chair of the commission. Uh, this is Andy Doherty. Richard, uh, Beakley. And joining us tonight is Michael Johnson and Eagle Scout, so.
And how about other members?
Unfortunately, Jennifer Tucker meeting, and Connor Doherty not being with us tonight, due to other few members.
Great, so I will, before you get into this, great presentation. We, uh, I like the flow of it. Uh, we have rec, so don't feel like you have to read every word on it.
Okay.
Um, but, but go do your stuff.
Great, alright. So we're here tonight to present our revisions to the commission charge that we ultimately adopted. Uh, we also have a progress update, uh, we've been working on, and then if you have any questions, we can do that. We are all.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because with the mask on, you can have the mic near, mic and vest or everything.
Right.
Of course, thank you. As for the commission charge, the, um, changes were. focus on key areas, eliminate the outdated material, streamline the language, add the position of vice chair, involve postal management officer as a non-voting member, and change the term to three years for all members. Those are the highlights. We all got, we detailed edits. So the areas of focus that we'll address tonight are trash, accessibility, sustainability, amenity enhancement. We have a, a privilege of having guests at our meetings and we collaborate with them where possible, including the Department of Public Works, the Postal Management Officer, the Seawall Committee, Northern South Rivers Watchlight Association, and the Beach Association. The first area of focus, trash, is most important to me, as well as to the DW. And, uh, the first thing we did, uh, address, complete is beginning beach cleanups. We started planning, we had about forty volunteers show up. There were more than fifteen hundred pounds of water caps, rope, and debris off the beach. The pieces were donated by Maria's and everybody had a great time. So we plan to continue that, um, June twenty-sixth, we do mine at beach and every two weeks thereafter, just to find our homes.
That's great.
That's great.
We're also reviewing the signage, just if there's anything else we can, um, do in a way of actually changing the culture, um, doing what we can to educate people of healthy issues. And we also, um, also looking at the idea of clean up baskets for volunteers and, uh, bring together the proposal, we can come back to, all that. And so I'd like to turn it over to Andrew Ramsey, who's successful.
Hi, before you go on the trash, can you give me comments on the trash component?
I'll say this, one of the things that folks talk, we have an actual community, I'm interested to see for the, baskets, even if you do, but if you will actually contact and use it, if we do that, so it's definitely.
Okay, Tom?
Yeah, I'd like to suggest that an effort to get people to take their trash with them is even more important. We can put out as many trash barrels as we want and people will fill it up and fill it up and fill them up and they'll still put stuff beside it. And I don't think it's going to want to ask for people to take their trash home.
That was the point we'd like to address through signage, are there other ways that we might consider addressing that?
Well, it's gonna be a big shift, so it's gonna be more than just putting signs in a decent, uh, campaign as well.
Yeah, it, it would have to be a campaign, but I will say that a long time ago, thirty years ago, I worked in a corporation where we had to have a campaign to get people to recycle white paper. And we had, it was a huge corporation and it was a change, it shifted in people's thinking. But it finally happened and now we do think twice about having their little basket and do their recycling in. So I just think that it's a total public education effort. And educate the children in schools, enable shanty parents to bring their trash home with them.
And I'd like to point out that some of the greatest improvements that are clean up worthy of SHS, Enviable Club. And I mentioned, we are, I think there are about eight that are still missing.
Well, that's good. So, Mike, I agree with both of you, but we still don't want the trash on the beach. So if you do not have enough cans, trash cans at the beach, we need to know that so that people at least put it in a trash can. So we've done this kind of every.
And we have, we have a hundred and eighty-three barrels out in town that get picked up daily. Uh, some of the beaches we've been seven and eight barrels, it's just, it's insane. It's just a lot of work.
But in the, in the summer, we typically increase it, particularly, well, at all beaches, but we generally increase it, don't we?
We have increased, yes, because the closest, for example, Peggy, you might have had one, uh, two barrels. It's probably seven or eight for you now and you're getting picked up on a regular basis and sometimes you have trouble teeming up. Uh, just so people know, we are diving for household trash, you know, looking for that exact dose, there is a lot of it.
I mean, I, I love to support them, maybe what leaders basically carry and carry out in their hands, so people start to learn to change their behavior. I support that, I'm pretty against it.
The next bucket, I guess we call it our carrying barrier, so we kind of look at the accessibility. And so for fact, we got another set, we'll do maps, another two hundred and fifty feet, we didn't necessarily get some money to CC money, what we remain to do, we want to get more of those, maybe they can be placed on the night tree. We're also looking at netco beach stickers for the families that are swimming in netco, there are fifty-one families. Um, the proposal is with the netco director, right, um, DVI has also been a part of this. These two, we're having issues with it, we think we're really getting that they really make access to our beaches since our, to our community. And then we're also looking at First Cliff resident access, there's a town plot just across the, um, maritime center that we think a path that could be cut through, just to give a little bit more, not kind of advertise that coming to the beach, just a little more access for residents living in that area. It's currently in conservation, it discusses this as possible, hopefully we cut pathways since we're going to that one. Um, and then we're also looking at signage, we really want to have clear, consistent, legible signage, as you know, our beaches have a lot of signs and from winter to summer, it kind of varies, but there's like eight different signs. We think it could be really nice if we streamlined that a little bit. You know, right now, we're just kind of surveying what we have by each beach area.
Great.
I don't know how you can just give access to First Cliff residents who it's public beach, so.
Well, I guess it'd be anywhere.
I know where it is.
Yeah.
And it's, nobody really knows about it, but it's very, very small, so.
There is a right way, we do have a right way.
Yeah, exactly.
It's been, I think there is a saying, First Cliff is just not a place to park out.
Right.
Then really, that was an, an access, yeah, anybody can use. I think there's a lot of that now, it's not our own.
No, this is the plot, this is partly, it looks like it's right.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, you could park the maritime center, um, and then walk over there. It's not a huge section, but it's just, it's town, so it could be accessible to that.
Just town on the entire.
No.
No, it's literally like thirteen.
Oh, boy.
Walkway.
I just, I don't know what it's supposed. I don't have the plots on the hand. Is there a piece, fifty piece of that, do you want to?
Top of my head.
No. We pulled the data permission, so.
Between the two houses, there's a gap.
Yeah, so no, we, we definitely pulled the information, we had some on the side of the beach, so it's more, right now, it's just talking about conservation, like, are you okay with us cutting it around the path from straight across versus pointing over that.
The only thing I would also ask is, the neighbors are right there, so just include them in the process. You know, and that, that's the key that is just awesome. Any other questions on the session? Great.
Accessibility is our next period of this. Right now, we're obviously trying to support mine and feature nourishment in any way we can, according to what's known that they ran, it's too late, now, CTM has been officially.
Submitted?
Submitted, yes, thank you. And so anything that we can do to support that, if we want to do. We are looking at partnering with the North and South River Watership Association to do some more beach grass plantings. They've done them in the past, maybe, and they definitely offer it again, get money for beach grass. And so we're kind of looking to work away to do that and, really just anything that we can do to help with postal facilities, do our initiatives, you know, with that with George Simmons and the Seawall Committee. There's not really a lot that we can do, but we're here for them and if there's anything that we can do to help, just find how much needs to be done.
Goodness, yes.
He calls himself.
Wonderful.
Yes. It's still, it was replaced by postal, my, right? Yeah, so she can work with Cory, postal, and DW, Sean, and right, Kevin doesn't, Sean do a lot of that as well. Any of the Seawall work?
Yeah, yeah, Cory's our main contact, she's been attending our meetings. And so we've been interacting with her and just trying to figure out what are we, they might be smaller, what we can do to help out, you know, maybe help out to reach the neighborhood associations or community outreach and those sorts. Like you said, getting residents involved and making sure that they're aware of any areas where there is, where that's easy to.
Answer.
As far as amenities go, uh, we'll get bike racks for the beaches. Right now, only Egypt has a functioning bike rack, there's one at negative, but it's in really rough shape, uh, it's broken. Um, so we're looking at, uh, reaching out to, um, South Shore Tech, who did the bike rack at the library, a really nice one, and, and see if they want to come back to Situate and help us out with some, some, uh, bike racks in other beaches. Sunrise beach stickers, uh, this is a recommendation from Andrew Goodrich. Uh, so our colleague Deborah is writing up her proposal, we're looking, we're thinking about, uh, a twenty dollar fee for a, for a, uh, a beach sticker that's good between the hours of sunrise and nine or ten in the morning uh, for fishermen or surfers or from, from out of town. Uh, and they can come in, use the beaches when the public and Situate residents aren't, and then maybe they'll stick around by breakfast, by whatever. Uh, so, so we're looking at that, proposals coming soon. We're reaching out to the various beach associations throughout the town, uh, and, you know, getting their feedback on that. We're gonna start by inviting them to, to the beach cleanups, uh, and kind of go from there. And then I want to turn it over to Michael Johnson here for, uh, proposals on water safety stations, so.
Yeah, before you start.
Yeah, I was just talking about the bike racks. Um, I know that, Lorraine's gonna shoot me when I say this, um, people are always looking for ways to, our friends and different people, and I think that old racks might be very appealing to, um, numbered people. Yeah.
That's great, that's great.
The benches all are on the right, and we're, sort of on benches, right, Lorraine, I mean?
Yes, up to the board, what they would like to do with the memorial program, right, before.
Yeah, we did put a quota on benches though.
We put the quota on, we have a memorial program, so if you'd love to have bike racks, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, that's good, that's great.
Thank you, because Sunday was something we were wondering.
That would be great, and it's assumption, we did such a nice job on the bike rack, the ivory, it had, you know, if someone wants to condition a really nice sort of. That was a personal project, I, I describe it, I, I understand, but I'm saying that it could become public. We love a piece of plastic. It looks like a piece of art, so.
Um, before we go on to your project, if you could just add, we've been trying to get this done for the twenty and diamond, you know, this bathrooms. So, if you could kind of get that as an enhancement, try and do that, especially in Egypt where there's a parking station right in the parking lot, um, you know, try and find funding somehow, and I know it's a little bit more expensive than some of the other stuff.
So by bathrooms, you're talking about permanent structure, not just supportive, that would happen.
We've had people come in with green solutions as well, so.
I don't count, but like a bath house.
A bath house.
With the snack bar.
Yes.
No, just a, a simple one, you know, with, leaving like a shower set up on the backside of it would be fantastic.
Yeah, that would be great.
If anybody ever goes out of, too, they've got that Minneapolis Southwest area, and that's all biodegradable, you know, no, um, it's that big system, Nelson.
All right, okay.
Turn it over to you.
Before I start, I wanted, do you guys have copies of the proposal?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, I'll start by introducing myself, my name is Michael Johnson and I'm from Troop Seven here in Situate. And I have an Eagle Scout proposal that I feel like the town and the beaches would be interested in. So basically, what this project is, is it functions, it's a water safety station, so. Situate, I know, currently, I know I've heard about lifeguard shortages and whatnot, and they're not always on duty. So what this station would do would be housing, uh, lifeguarding equipment such as like life vests and, uh, life ring and a first aid kit, for example, would be housed inside of these stations. And this would be, so that way anyone at any time could use it and possibly save a life if someone ends up starting to drown. Um, I feel like, so this design, uh, would be about the size of a small shed, probably thirty, thirty, thirty inches by thirty inches, about five feet tall, and it'd be completely created by lumber. Um, and then these units would not be permanent though, they would be, uh, they would be portable, so that way, in case of a big storm happens or something like that, they can move them away from the beaches, that way they don't get swept out. And, uh, storage for this would likely have to be provided by the Situate Department of Public Works. And, um, and whether or not we storm in the winter, it's, uh, I guess up for you to decide. But, uh, it, it's another possibility. Um, the two locations I am thinking of putting these at are at both Mine and Egypt Beach. Uh, since these, uh, beaches are the most open ocean facing and subject to the coastal currents, I feel like those two locations would be, would have the most use for these stations. And, um, they'd be placed at the entrances of both of these beaches. And so I provided, uh, pictures on the proposal of about a size comparison of what it would look like. Um, the first part is Egypt and there's multiple ideas of where I could put it. I would have to obviously work with the Conservation Commission, because I know there's certain plants that you, um, don't want these things disturbing. And then, um, the second part would be, the second one would be in Mine, near its main entrance. And this would be off of Blaine Road. And, uh, it would just be, would be right by that walkway where most people enter in that area. Uh, the cost and funding of this would be all provided through me and my family, so it would not cost the town anything. And it'd be constructed offsite out of the way of these entrances and then put there once they are completed. Um, and then the timing is kind of up in the air right now based off of my summer plans, but they could be, they could be very soon if, if, in far, so.
Thank you for the generous offer. Um, I'll open up the board for questions. Why don't we, do you, do anyone have any more questions? Not for the Egypt, but for the other stuff first. But the enhancements, I know I jumped into bathrooms, I don't know if you guys had any enhancements?
Well. What I, what I'd like to see the beach manager perhaps do is to take each one of the beaches and lay out some sort of, and I'm not talking major plan, but a very small, one page, each beach separately, because my, I feel as though beaches get certain attention and others don't get attention and you can never exactly figure out why. And so, um, I would like to have all the people who live on or near these beaches or use them, feel as though that each beach is getting proper attention. And you may get the lifesave safety station at Mine this year, but next year, if we're gonna do this, next year, we'll take that to Hamra, we'll do another one in Hamra. So the, the beaches are all treated fairly. Uh, and it can be just on a rolling, five-year basis, uh, so the people know, and I know we're gonna be doing the Mine at parking lot not this summer, but afterward, so that is being taken care of. But I've had people ask me, for example, why doesn't Sand Hills have a lifeguard? What are you gonna tell me, and I'm sure when people tell me, if you don't have enough lifeguards, we know that, you don't have enough money. That's always a problem, but I just feel like people at each of the beaches, whichever ones they use, feel as though that they're getting, you know, not the same attention, but equal attention. I love my phrase, that we are working on a three-to-five plan that will address those concerns, that will lay out a plan that's gonna be going out with. Right. So, and I don't put museum beach under listed beaches, because that's sort of, that we've left it over a couple of years and we wanted to put a terrible problem down there with kayaks and the news and all kinds of junk. And we finally got it cleaned up, but I'd like to think that we're gonna keep our eye on that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, Lorraine, just general comments, and I'd love to definitely learn more about what you need especially for funding for, for beach harassment, sustainability front, so. Really, and first of all, thank you for all, there's so many different aspects as we talk about this, and I know you guys have worked so hard on it, but I definitely want to hear more about that. And then, um, sensibility, I mean, I, I don't have the answer, I don't know if people have, I'd love to focus, thank a lot of Egypt Beach and get folks with mobile issues up and running, I mean, it's so difficult. And it's probably not gonna be an expensive fix, but we have to do.
What we have to do, we have to be kind of a long-term thought, but it's difficult. Difficult to be able to get down. So again, all of these, in general, just want to say they're great.
Yeah, I don't want to take too much time, but I do appreciate all the work you put into this. I think all the ideas were really good and strong and much needed. And nothing is always challenged, so. Any of us are happy to help, you know, figure out some of that, too. But yes, it's great, it's a great plan. And thank you for cleaning up the charter and amending it, so you did a nice job on that as well.
All right, and now let's talk about the Eagle Scout project. Again, thank you for putting the time and energy into it. Any questions specific to that?
No, we just love Eagle Scouts and their projects. They have so much. It's, it's great, it's great.
Swimming grounds, this past weekend in New England. I mean, it's, thank you for doing this, nothing scares me more. So this is very needed advantage, this is wonderful.
I love the idea, and I have a couple of questions. So first, you know, will the structure be tethered? Because I worry, you know, one storm comes and it goes flying and it costs your whole investment and your work. So do you consider any, any of that? I have no idea how heavy it is, so I'd worry about that.
I currently am not planning for having tether, but that could change. We could end up seeing how heavy it is and seeing how weighted it gets to become. And if it's not weighed enough, I could easily add feathers to it to make sure it doesn't, if it's just a mild storm or something like that.
Yeah, I would imagine you would, with the D W and conservation placement, right? My only other concern is, you know, the security of the equipment that you're investing in. I mean, it's going to be on a honor system, and we should have a plan back, not for you, because you're doing a wonderful construction and the idea and the scout project, but if the commission takes this on, right, what is the replenishment for stolen materials? Because I need to have this built and have somebody take them, and then we don't replenish it for another five years, right? So I think we need to think about that as well and how it should be sustainable, really. It's a great idea. My thoughts, I don't know if there are liability issues that we face with this, but no matter.
There's some potential liability issues, not too many, because this is a swimming area. We was talking about putting something like this on the Blaine Road and Blue Foster. If that is a liability, then putting something there may be encouraging people to start to place these shoes. So, yeah, this is a liability standpoint. But any time you do anything with liability, really the liability is if you're encouraging someone who's not trained to take this equipment and go on the water. Okay, because as a lead guy, you're taught reach, throw, row, don't go. You never go in the water unless you're actually happy. Again, the liability, liability areas, just by having a piece of liability is it.
Have you seen these in our towns, that appreciate the idea?
Well, they've been, other Eagle Scouts have done this in other states. Like I know the big example in this picture was done by a scout in Minnesota. And I believe there's also been a similar project done for that as well. So there are in other towns, and they have worked there, so.
Okay, great, it's good.
Michael, excuse me, have you gone to the rec commission yet to talk to them?
I, I was in brief contact with them before they led me to the beach commission, but I understand that they like replenished, like for instance, first aid kits. I know they replenished it for the lifeguards, so I'm assuming it would be under that same budget, so.
Yeah, I think, one, they are in charge of lifeguards at the beaches, so I think they're able to be valuable. Two, and again, we have this stuff, some of the stuff now. It'd be interesting to see what we're doing with it now. Okay. You know, I think there's a ton, is there a ton?
It's locked. So lifeguards are locked, the laws, they take equipment out of the beach. By the day they lock the stuff and the locks.
Yeah, so we want to make sure that it's collaborating with that. And the only sad story I'll tell you is we had a structure like this once on Peggie Beach, and someone said, oh, fine. So, so you've just, Maureen mentioned the security aspect of it. We've got to just think about that, because it is, you know, it could be vandalized and it could be, you know, dealt with. Maybe it's different material, maybe it's like Maureen said, put in the ground and more securely or locked or whatever that would be. So just overall, the idea is great, great, it's a great need for the town, great. We don't have that, but just collaborating more with some of these people and talking about the experience of their capacity, see if there's anything that needs to be started. I think they'd be helpful.
One more question.
Yes.
Okay, when is your Eagle ceremony, is it the next year? Are you choosing to do this in the upcoming year? What's your timing?
Timing, are you talking about for the project or just in Eagle in general?
For the project, because I think, it's my understanding that you have to complete the project in order to get your Eagle Scout stats, right?
Yes.
So would that be the next year?
The, I mean, I would have to get Eagle before November in general, but this project would be done well before then.
Okay.
I mean, depending on how fast materials could come in, this could be done by, in like early July, I'd say possibly. But if it is, so the biggest problem with me is that I have to go out of state for a portion of the summer, for a large portion of the summer. And it's, I leave around mid-July, so I would try to get it done before then, which I think I would be able to. So that way I can get the most use out of the summer. But at the latest, I would have to come back in August and then complete it then, which I'm sure I would still have plenty of use in August and September, I don't know, later date, whatnot, so.
There's a process, yes, we believe that's a process proof. Have it all done, that everything he has, that's been submitted, or is it in progress?
I've fixed what I was trying to get my important, so we'll be good.
Thank you. Do you have the feedback you need from us? I have an idea. Yeah, I think meeting with rec would be one of the first things to do, just to make sure they're on board with stuff. If you need to come back or ask us questions, you can email me or us or.
Should you have a mentor in town to help with that, or is it, have we usually? Do you have one?
Yeah, I would have, I would pretty much work through the beach commission and work with them, so.
Okay. So run Eagle and help them out and get in touch with the rec and.
If that works for you, I'm sure.
Yeah, I don't want to complicate things, that's my common goal.
If you get stuck with a company, but one of the, one of the aspects of the Eagle project, is he's supposed to navigate a lot of this stuff himself, as part of the project.
Okay, it's part of the challenge, right?
I mean, we have, we have parents that call and they'll say, I'm looking for an Eagle project for my son, and I hang up and say, hey, my son called. That's actually, that's actually part of the project. Your parents aren't supposed to do it for you.
Well, you're definitely doing so. I guess what Maureen's saying is we're delegating the responsibility to you guys and rec.
Yeah, if you get hung up, take a call.
Okay.
Great, great job on all this stuff.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to be comfortable with this?
You know what I'd like to do? I'd like, because one of the members isn't here, I just want to see if she has any feedback on it. So why don't we focus at the next meeting and just give her the opportunity to do it.
We'll check if there's really no other people with the answers back.
No, no, yeah. Anything else important? I guess we do, but before we go, why don't you open up as any of us back?
Yeah, Steve Young, five years before drove, I like to recognize this guy, man, he's seventeen years old. And to, to come up before the committee and to talk about your project, I mean, it is highly impressive, right? To have this, you know, design concept, to talk track down of what he's done, what he needs to do. I would love to be able to donate, you know, a hundred bucks to your cause. Would love to do it, and I think that other people would if you, if you're allowed to do that. I would love to be able to do that.
I'll give these a press. Steve, you're nail on the head right now. These Eagle, these Eagle candidates are so impressive, they've done so much stuff in the town. Everyone of these projects have been spectacular, and really been a need for the town, so. Thank you very much. All right, so what do we want to do with the motions? This was the first one. Well, there's two motions. So one of them is change the, the, not by law, the charge.
The charge.
So the charge, going to wait on that until, see if this candidate has any comments. And the second one is.
Oh, yeah, we took with the Eagle Scout project to build, so two water safety stations at Egypt and Mine Beaches, intending working with beach commission and the recreation commission.
Right. Second. Second is probably further discussion. Anything from the audience saying no, no favor?
I, I.
I agree.
Just, yeah, we want to send your contact information to us to afford or offer.
Yeah, I know.
Great, thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you very much.
The next agenda item is an update on the water treatment plant project. That's Steve Rafferty.
Steve, how are you?
Good. Hi, guys. Steve Rafferty, who owns project manager for Situate. Something decided to do water treatment, but with me tonight is Steve Robins, who is currently a senior engineer, seventeen years experience, designing the water treatment. With him as well as, you have a question, who's a project engineer. She has been heavily involved, pilot program. Update to your board. Last time we were born, but before you're born, it was slightly before the time reading. We have, I can step back, we are working, pilot can't work the attitude, but in terms of reaching out more to the public, I don't know, explaining to them what we've done and why we're willing to do it, a lot of possible alternatives, and you're not out there. So there's two parts, some presentations, my voice, worrying about the pilot things, we have to deal with all of that, we don't want to do anything, that's the main thing happened, the alternative process and some timetables are black, and some meetings are, I don't know, set up. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Steve.
Thank you, Stephen, and nice to be with you all, and appreciate your time this evening. My name is Steve Robins with Word Incurran. And I want to update the board a little bit on the work that we're doing towards the new water treatment plant for the town. And first, I want to talk through a little bit of what we are doing with the pilot plant and the equipment that's out at the site. The pilot plant was constructed last fall. It's a temporary structure, basically a small version of a full-scale water treatment plant. And the purpose of the pilot is to use the actual water that would be treated and serve to the town and work through all of the testing and processes with developing of that new treatment process for me. Gives us the opportunity to try different treatment techniques to optimize our chemistry and gather the design data that we need to address the town's water need. This will be the, right now, the third phase, I think, through the final phase of the piloting for treatment at the Old Oak and Bucket site. We conducted first round of treatment last fall, second round this past winter, and now we're coming back and doing some infermentory testing and confirming the work that we did previously and to get to this point. The overall pilot process that we are working with is basically taking the raw water from Old Oak and Bucket, adjusting the pH and alkalinity, adding a coagulant, testing two coagulants to determine best cost effectiveness, polyfluoride and ferric chloride. We then go through a two-stage blockulation process where we allow the solids to gather up and settle out in a plate settler. We then add an intermediate oxidant, we're focused on chlorine dioxide at this time. Before, we then are testing two different media for filtration, sand and anthracite and random or activated carbon. Following that filtration step, we then add sodium microchloride, as opposed to the gaseous chlorine that's used at the existing facility, adjust the pH of the gaseous hydroxide. And we're looking to see whether there's any benefit or need for a manganese contractor to make clear that it's a final polishing step, may or may not be needed. But regardless, the facility will be designed to incorporate in the future if it's needed. From that point, there would be final coordination for distribution system disinfection and sent out to the distribution system. That's the overall process that we're testing. This differs from the existing facility in a couple of ways. The existing facility has less flexibility in its blockulation process. There's a lower, lesser technology clarifier, so we get better performance with what we're proposing here. And in the filtration process specifically, the town has a single treatment path. There's one sand filter and one carbon filter. And it's really a system where you have multiple single possible points of failure. If anything needs to be serviced, even if the filter just needs a routine backwash, it takes the whole plant out of service, and the town is therefore missing about a third of its production capacity during either that scheduled or unscheduled service production. So that's one of the critical factors that this project will address. The current facility also doses gas chlorine as opposed to liquid chlorine with accompanying safety hazards. And it doses it at a point in the process where the organics load is too high, and that's led to the consent order that the town has for disinfection by products. So that's further addressed with the changes in process chemicals and treatment rules that we are looking at through this process.
Steve, one more question. Yeah. So are you saying you don't know if you need the manganese tractor because stage one and stage two may take care of it all?
That's correct.
That's the reason for us to do the third phase of pilot. Certain results in the fall, we thought the contractor might be good then. In the winter, we got some really good results, saying it's not a lot of need for the contractor. So now we're looking at it one more time, as you said, tweaking the chemicals to see if we really need to make that investment this time.
It's a good time to be testing, because I'm making these levels of demand.
That's why we're here now.
More?
Well, then, would it make sense to, like, would you ever design it to be there in case the magnesium levels fluctuate in the future?
Exactly what we're doing. That the reason we show up on this process road, I don't know, we are incorporating potential need for that. Also, we're very cost-conscious, you know, we're going with this. So unless needed, we're going to make sure to keep adding, should the magnesium levels not change at the time, we can do some additional.
I think, Steve, we talked about, it'll also be a way to add it too fast.
No.
We don't need it right now, but the future, so the plan will be designed. At some point, the state says you need to ration down the beach outseas further, we'll be able to add that without having to build something.
The simplest way of water moist to go downhill. When the town goes downhill, it's a certain amount of energy. So we're just making sure the layout is not too, by the time you get to the, going to distribution system, there's some available energy to stick, another treatment process issue that we require. Filtration usually takes the most amount of energy to both, that's a filter.
How major of a cost impact are we talking roughly for the contractor? Is it millions, tens of thousands?
All in is probably seven. Yeah, up in the range of seven million, five to seven. We have a really.
Seven for that aluminum right there?
That's a big concrete blocks. Big concrete blocks holding a very specialized.
Have you got the, we got any cost, anything to take in?
That's why we're here. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Sorry. I just want to say that we kind of started down this road because of groundwater. And so the last thing I want to see happen is for us to spend forty-six million instead of fifty million. And so the last thing I want to see happen is for us to spend forty-six million instead of fifty million and not solve that problem and not deal with that problem. And I, it's just, I mean, we, we have a habit, and this is my rant for the night. We start to get cheated about things, we all just take that up, just take that up, just take that away. And then we wind up, you know, not getting what we really need. So as cost, as cost conscious as we all are, we're here to provide clean, potable, good drinking water for our citizens, and I still, so one minute a second.
Let, let, let me just come directly to your concern.
Yes.
This entire piloting process is followed by very strict protocol taken by the DVP. They will review our final report on this and make sure that what we are receiving from this A, accept technology. And B, will meet all of their criteria. More importantly, the team has stepped themselves, not just meet the state criteria, to meet the longest amount of intent for anything that encounter the water coming up. The reason we're doing the question on this part is we're, we're seeing to pilot very good results, we're now at the two B phase of, but it's ultimately gonna be your highest magnitude. It turns out, in the springtime, when we get a couple of big heavy rainstorms of Old Open Bucket, manganese numbers, they've been on the chart, they're here, go over here. We are really targeting it to see what's happening right now in those waters. We need a contractor to manage all of this level.
Well, I can just finish by saying that, you know, it has been said, and I'm not gonna say who said it or when it was said, but drinking brown water won't hurt you. And, um, it's just unpleasant to look at, so. I'm just, I'm on the board for three more years and I just wanna hear any more town water complaints.
Again, back up, back up a slide here. Wait there, so you see the farm, the four jars at the top?
Yes.
So the raw water is sliding on. The filtration water is really brown because of all the chemistry laws in there. Then coming off the plate, that looks pretty good, coming off the filter, it's crystal clear. But again, that's not brown water. The manganese is a little bit of a separate issue in terms of state regulatory role, that's a lot of it, and we need to get that down as well.
Right. You're cute.
The second element that we wanted to talk about is what the team is doing in terms of public outreach. The, uh, three pieces of this public outreach are conducted, are in the process of conducting survey of town residents, and I'll talk to that a little bit. We have some public events planned and future communications, we'll touch on each of these briefly as well. The team conduct, uh, retained proboscis research to conduct a third party survey, statistically significant survey of residents that was conducted via phone call, via text, via email, web access. Reaching out to a statistically significant set of residents within the town. That occurred from June first to June tenth, so three hundred or so residents were contacted, which gives us the available data that we need to understand the general sentiment in town. There were specific questions that were asked, and there were also the opportunity to provide long form answers. That survey is now open and available for any member of the public to also answer if you're contacted and you have an opinion you'd like to share with our team. That link is available on the town website, we have worked for another week or two at this point as well. So we are looking for that input to understand sentiment. We obviously, as a team, heard a lot of good input from the town at the last town meeting, and we want to continue that dialogue. The, um, questions are really focused on understanding what residents in the town understand about the project, what their opinions are, and then also how they want to communicate with the institution. Uh, we're also looking to create some in-person virtual arenas for people to ask questions. One of those was this afternoon, where we had an open house at the pilot plant, gave a few tours, we answered some questions in person about the water treatment process, chemistry, we just had an open dialogue with the residents that showed up and one was talking with us. Coming up on June twenty-first, we have a virtual session that's targeted to the residents around the Sturzenmeto site. Those residents have then notified via mailing that there is a listening session for them to specifically make their list heard to our teams, we understand what their concerns are around that, that outpost site. Then on Wednesday, June thirteenth, with some logistics to follow, when it be announced, we are gonna have a public update meeting where we'll be able to talk through some of the results of the survey and get into more of a discussion about alternate site analysis that will be conducted based on some of the input that we years have surveyed and work that we already have along the process. So that will be a project presentation followed by a Q and A session on July thirteenth. Depending on how those, those sessions go, if you're from the community and communications preferences, we may expect additional events. We are, um, working on a multi-channel communication strategy. The initial results of that survey show that most people want to hear about this by email. And that the social media platform that most residents are comfortable with is Facebook, so those are two communication paths that we're aware of and are working on. We recognize that it doesn't work for all residents, and so that's why it's a multi-mode communication, uh, plan. The best thing that residents can do right now is stay informed about the project, is to make sure that they are on the town's email list now, and they can do so by going to the town website and signing up there. That's what I have.
But, for one more thing, Ken, one of the big concerns was the site issue. So the team has taken a step back and looking at all, pretty much all parts of this in situ, potentially be allowed to host such a facility. We are fairly far along with the process of adopting interactive map, um, that residents can go to see all the sites on it, click on any of the sites, see the pluses and minuses of all the sites. We don't have a fixed time frame when that will be up and running, we were working with the town's IT director. Jazz about from Tyron, the jazz about from the urban, to seek the best way and location to host it, because a lot of GS maps are pretty static, not very interactive, it's not overwhelming complexity zone, coming together in this couple of weeks to have that map done and have a way to host it. We are considering about hold pilot, I think we are making a project, project website of a project. Web page, with things with these ideas moving forward, we want this, instead of just wanting to ride with the town, very cautious.
Steve, I, I think it's important, uh, you guys are dealing with the water process, I think you can get very little pushback in terms of the water process. Right, we know we need to be done, Steve, we know we need a cleaner, Karen pointed out, as strong as she can, we cannot have brown water after this thing's built. So if we gotta put three of those boxes at the end of it, then we gotta do that. But, we found a site that we think is the best site for this. You showed us a plan whatever day you came here, but we never really went back to that plan and said, okay, how much buffer we have here, can we move this building, can we, how much is coming off the street? And I think that is what the neighborhood back that, you know, back there is having concerns about. And we didn't have a specific meeting on that, like, what is this site gonna look like? And, you know, we've heard clear cut, we've heard a lot of words that aren't really necessarily true. Well, he must have seen a picture that says to the neighbors that this isn't what it's gonna look like. You know, if there was a hundred foot buffer between their houses and, and one small building, then we wouldn't really be having any points right. So until we can really look at that and say, okay, how can we tweak this to make it, if we believe, and I think all of us believe, and I think most of the most other people involved, that this is a good site for this, right? That there's not a lot of big properties in town that we can do this on and that work effectively. But if that's gonna be the site, we really have to tweak what it's gonna look like and get the neighborhood to buy into it and, you know, they talk about build, number of buildings, the driveways, the trees, buffers and all this sort of stuff. That's gotta be a, I think that's like a number one issue that we're dealing with here.
Couldn't, couldn't agree with you more, Tony. So, next week, we're going to hold this virtual listening session. What do you think? Articulate, well, re-articulate what the thing we heard to make sure that we are very aware of where the concerns are. At the same time, I would say that when we put a plan in front of people for it, I've been using the phrase, it's a proof of concept, it's not an optimized plan, it is just a plan, a level, a map, which the whole facility evolves through the pilot, because that determines how big and how large you need it. Okay, it's just not really using up the lot of space, how big and how much you need to do, so. The gentleman, Tony, right here, he's been very interested as we go out to the next round of this piloting, to see what happens with some shifting and change in the coagulants, because that will ultimately decide how big will the looms happen, okay? We are very much aware that, well, the proof of concept, we didn't try to jam the buildings together. So, there are several paths to increase the buffer, we want to show how much not just, it's a firm, we tell you we're gonna commit twice, it's pretty awful. But for example, if we go to the planning board, the planning board is a metal, the buffer on the A side could be a little bit smaller, the buffer on the backside could then be bigger. That, right now, the proof of concept is showing buffers all based upon the planning board requirements and the project. We did hear, buffer, 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 it's good, buffer is good. Well, let's back, look back at the process thing, you know, the first couple of steps we're doing is with buffering the water for pH and alkalinity control cell. Buffering is good.
Well, I, I understand there's a process and we maybe have to do A before we can get to B. But once we get, once we get the scope of what the project is, we could have several meetings with the whole boardroom group and say, okay, what can we do, can the building go to the left, to the right, and then go back further, and go over here? Because that's the, that's their biggest concern, right? They, they, they think every tree on that property is gonna be cut down, and there's gonna be a, you know, a will you want a jump factor that is, you know, and that's, until they see a picture that shows them differently, then they, they don't know what to bet. And we don't either, I mean, if I remember correctly, on our first meeting, that's all we said, you know? Wow, it's a lot bigger than I thought it would be, and hey, what's the buffer for the neighbors? And we haven't gone back to that yet, so that's, that's what I think we need to, you know, where we, where to that point, we've gotta turn up the volume there to get them more involved in.
So I, I would, we're not, once we get to the the listening session next week, and we're open listening session early in July, as you said, we're looking at having almost in essence a weekly communication with anybody that's on about emailing, this sort of through our tagging Facebook page. And then we will engage, you know, with other public forums, other meetings that need to be held, you know, certainly back with things. And until, it's a little bit of a like you say, you know, I can't do the thing because I don't know how to dance, I can't learn how to dance because I can't do the thing, so. Until we sort of get to an agreement that we're gonna use a certain site, going back and trying to consolidate everything now, we're not really prepared to do that exercise. You know what I'm saying, that we know that there's ways to make it a little tighter, and we've been exploring those. We're not, we're not programmed, we're not prepared, oh, another plan, variable buffer, but we can start talking once we get into the detailed design about how to optimize the buffer and how to optimize.
My fear is, if you go to the residents before you have any idea, they're gonna get the same response from them, which is, you don't know, right? They're just gonna, they're just gonna push back again because they don't know. I, I would almost suggest not doing that meeting until you get this part done and you find out what flexibility you have with the, the site. I know I'm rambling a lot here, but, um, let me open up the rest of the.
Would you mind sharing this conversation a little more step, yeah? So, we have not advanced the design on the Sturzenmeto site because of the need to confirm that. I think you're suggesting that we should start advancing the design a little bit more on that site. Start finding where we can, um, make it the site more, the buffers bigger.
I understand that, but you just told me until they knew their part, the lagoon, you don't know the lagoon could be eighty or fifty feet.
Well, 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 for the next couple of weeks, we're finishing the piloting, we're getting results for analyzing.
So you may want to not have a meeting with the neighbors to go, that's, that's done. I mean, especially.
I agree with you on that.
I mean, it's not, this is the day today, that's next Tuesday.
So that's week one.
Yeah, we do want to push that off until you get more of that done. One thing I did want to say, I know I'm gonna go to that, I know you're gonna go to that, we may want to post a selectance meeting if more of us are gonna go to that on the, on the nights of those nights, so that three or four of us can go. Right, did you keep that, on the nights of the?
Could you confirm the move to a different light of the week?
We just have to post it in case more than three of us go.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
So it, you know, maybe the I can't go, you'll go, we won't know.
Yes, I will.
Let me open up to your head.
Well, on that meeting, that's just a listening, whatever, it's just listening, there's nothing, just to make sure that there's feedback, feedback.
You can listen as long as you don't discuss with them.
No, I'm just saying, I don't like, I think, I have a few of those coming in, I, I think there's been letters are drawn out, and it's to make sure that there's additional feedback coming in, so then the next step. I agree with your concern, but I, I think it can be a part of the communication plan to get that listening session.
I don't think we can have too many meetings.
Right, um, yeah, maybe just make sure you teed out that, that's exactly what it is, right? You don't have, you can't do the final design till you have a pilot that's done. Tell us your concerns, what will be done with it, or else you're just gonna get yourselves in a circle of not being able to answer questions, and they're all gonna get angry, and, you know, it would be, just set the expectations up at the.
That is the expectation of that meeting, if it is truly a listening session, not a, not a presentation, not a discussion, we want to make sure that when we further refine that site plan, that we are understanding the relative concerns and importance that the community has. And so we're not missing the boat when we come back with the content.
Well, having been on one listening session, which was extremely unpleasant, we didn't have answers, and I don't think we're going to have answers. I think the town meeting was another listening session. I don't know what more feedback we need to give in terms of, this is what people are worried about. And if there is in fact any other possible site, I think we need to know about it sooner rather than later. And I will say that honestly, that even if we found an alternative site, we, unless it's, unless it's in another town, we're gonna hear the same thing, I don't want it in my neighborhood. But I think we need to have summary of showing people how we can take the plan that you presented and how we can modify it so that we don't need a garage up there. So that we can make the buildings smaller, so that, you know, and I understand this is all science about the lagoons. And there were issues related to the lagoons that some people were making some pretty wild accusations about, you know, we're gonna overrun the neighborhood with all kinds of pests and, you know, all that stuff. And I, unless we have some answers for people, as much as I think we need to listen, if you don't have at least some answers to some of the questions, real legitimate questions, how much acreage is this thing, does it need? Uh, I think the acreage we've got up there is what, is it eighteen acres or fifteen? I think the acreage we've got up there is what, is it eighteen acres or fifteen? Does it, can we only use eight acres? Can we make it so that you can't see it from anywhere? And, you know, I've, I've been traveling the past week through Maine and Canada and I've seen water treatment plants that you'd have to look twice to know it was a water treatment plant. But now that I've been through what we've been through here, I know, oh, that's a water treatment plant. So, and it doesn't look like ours that we have. It's much, they're much more within the, you know, they don't look that. But I just, I just feel like if we don't even know right now that we don't have another, I, I think it's, it's probably provable that we may not have another possible location for it. Having been through trying to find acres for the ball fields in town, trying to find acreage, we, we fought and fought and fought for years over the senior center that's been built. And some people are still unhappy aware of that. We had to put the school, the, the middle school in back here. A lot of people fought over that. So we don't have a lot of land, but unless you can say to people, well, you may think that's a good place for it, it doesn't make sense economically to put it there because we'd have to build a piping all the way across town to get there. And then, you know, there are people who still think we could take the ball field down at Greenwood. There are people who think we should put it across the street. I mean, people have all these wild ideas. But until we can prove to them, you may think that we have twenty acres here, we don't. So, and all the while, we had to give it a spin. And we can't let people who don't want in their backyard to derail this. But I think we have to be sensitive to what their issues are. And it just looked to me as though when we saw the immediate plan, that there was a garage there. I, you know, I know that the, the, the water department has trucks, but I think they should put them somewhere else. So, that's it.
Will we open it up to, uh, Watkins?
Hi, Steve Young, old, five old Ford Road. Just a couple of quick questions. When you were talking about that you sent out your survey, how did you contact those people via text, call and email? When you called them, is that a number that you just used that you had, or did you just randomly? Did they say okay to it at the call point?
Yeah, so that was organized through the research company. They have databases of people's information and they handled that outreach lesson done by engineers.
That they have.
It's become like survey.
So questions, I guess, do they have the okay to call people, or what if they're not, they do not call it?
Uh, they don't call. My understanding is that they don't call people that are registered, probably not calling, registered.
Okay. What about texting? How did you, how did you reach those? Same thing?
Same, same process.
And, and so just to kind of go back to this meeting that you're going to have, right? I think some of the select board members eating in a butter, the problem is, is that we don't know anything. The, the meeting that Mr. Conley hosted was very ill prepared. It was disingenuous. It was, it was just nothing. It didn't stay in. There's more people that are frustrated after that meeting than anything. Getting your comment timed about statements, you know, that are being prepared. We have nothing to go on as far as information. So when you sit, when you hear things about, yeah, clear cut, right? There's no information that's even out there as far as how many trees would be cut down. You know, what is the buffer zone? These two gentlemen, or Mr. Rafferty, didn't know at that time what the buffer zone was. If you go back and listen to the call, it was either fifty feet or a hundred feet. It was, and there was, there was no clear information about anything. There was, there was nothing at all. And so when I hear a comment coming from a select board person about the neighborhood's concerns and, yeah, sure, there's things written out on Facebook, right? But, but they're, they're, they're valid until you prove different, right? Until you give information to people that they can clearly understand how it's going to affect them, right? I don't know what these retention ponds or, or looms will do. That's a concern to me. And for you to, to, to say what you said, it, it, you know, you were saying that if there's contaminants or, or something like that, I mean, that, that's just kind of disrespectful to the neighborhood, right?
Steve, we are here, right? So I'll let you go, but there's nothing disingenuous going on. I just want to keep it, I just want to keep it, you know, you hear what we're saying here and we're working with you.
But here we are, right? It's been out there for a while, right? And the information that we get, now, we're going to have this thing on the thirteenth, right, or whatever it is. People aren't going to know what questions to ask. We don't even know what to say to, 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 to voice our concerns. We don't know what our concerns even really are because we, we don't know what the plan is.
Well, that's, I mean, I think you're hearing what we just said. I think Amber's point is the more, more communication, the better, right? It's not going to hurt anything, but, but we want it to be productive, right? So I, I think, I hope you're hearing that we are on the same page, right? And, and I think what I'm hearing is we've got to get part A done before they can adjust part B. And part B, Steve, I don't remember the word to use, but it's like a prototype. It was just a, it was a
They call it proof of concept.
A proof of concept, right? Can this thing fit on this piece of property at the most extreme level? And the answer was yes to that. And now we, now we've decided, not decided, but we don't want it at the extreme level. We want to, we want the concerns of the board and the citizens to be taken into account. And what I'm hearing is we can't do that yet until you know how big the lagoon has to be and you've heard feedback on a garage being maybe put offsite or something like that, you know? I don't think you've taken that into consideration in drawing those plans up.
We, we have to not run that, right, to revise the concept. Again, we're getting the pilot done.
Exactly, and that's, I'm not, I think, in, in a listening session, we might
we can be a little more specific. We have the proof of concept plan. We could work off that, saying, you know, let, let us walk you through this a little bit more in the neighborhood. This, I apologize if I don't have all the numbers memorized, but we will check, I took down the, check all of it, show buffers in the proof of concept plan. We will help you understand the scale and size of the loom and how it function. We can walk through some of that stuff. As, as like maybe a, a first ten or fifteen minutes, however much time it takes of a listening session to present, you know, specific details of the proof of concept plan and even be able to say, well, this is an area that as we continue to develop a more detailed design, we expect it will get somewhat smaller. I don't think anything's going to get fifty percent smaller, but things might get fifteen or twenty minutes longer. Every time it makes something a little smaller, that leaves more land we don't have to destroy. So we can walk you through one sort of proof of concept plan, one big walkstart, and why they're there. Or that would be, that would be.
I was pointing a couple of points. A, I think we need a select board member, I don't know if it's you, whoever it is, to, to be on this meeting and, and lead it if you're also intent on having a listening session. And I think what we're misunderstanding is when we've ever done any type of building in this town, we've had, like you said, a prototype. We've gone out there and we've educated. We can't do a design until the money is appropriated, which is special town meeting. So information like that, the residents don't always understand. So we're not, we, we, we need to be cohesive in everything in the process, in where we are. Answer what you can, or if you're going to go and have a listening session, I agree with Karen, it's just going to be another, it's going to be another hour of frustration unless you can point out exactly, like, look at our senior center plan. It was a book that we had. It was like, here's design one, design two, design three, right, options. But obviously, it didn't mean that way, right? And anyway, my point is, we, we've followed the process for years in this town and it's worked. And I fear that we're not necessarily doing that in this case, and I think we need to. So we need to sit down and review what that process has been so the residents understand it's fully where we are. You know, yeah, the overall path, which is great, but we still need to appropriate it in town meeting. And we can't design fully until we do that, correct? Right? Jim, we can't go to the design, right, until it's appropriated, so.
To, to your point on, you make a good point on things that are buildings, there is usually what? You can look at space needs and then they look at, you know, comparisons of the buildings. That, that step, you know, what is the building, right? We will have to have more listening sessions on that orientation. But this is a treatment process. And so the scale and the size of it
Is depending on the pilot.
is driven by the process. So we've spent a fair amount of time up to now trying to get the process really down to the most efficient process we can get.
I'm going to cut you off.
No, it's fine.
We, we know that, we get all that. So, did you have something? Uh, Ken?
The only thing I was going to say is, is the thought process here wasn't to be deceiving or, or just causing problems. Sometimes.
No reason to.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying it like that, but engineers sometimes have been known to think in a box. So the idea was to hear what the concerns were with the residents. Because we are tight for time, so when they are starting to put the design together, they can say people are really concerned if things are here, maybe we stay away from here and, and work those different areas so they can try to help the neighborhood before again, get a set of guidelines to get started. You know, and I understand the process, but they're, they're trying to.
Yeah, I, I applaud the, the thought process. I think if you want a listening session, go back and read the meeting and you'll hear it. Go, go listen to town meeting and we'll hear what their points are. And those are going to be the points again until they see something else. And it's really just fear, right? They're, there's, they don't know what it's going to be and they're afraid that someone's going to come in and cut down every single tree there and put a big factory. And until we can show them a picture that doesn't have that, they're not going to believe us. Um, I'm going to, one second, ma'am, I think you had your hand up first.
Yeah.
Just name and address.
Through Star Peace, went through Gannapesh Lane, on the water resource, which is well. Let me get back to Karen's concern about manganese. This is the pilot, the plan, I guess, and this is what, what twentieth, on current scale. My question is, in your analysis of the ability of the current process that you're working on, without that specials, five seven, five bucks, what's your confidence level of production with full volume coming through that your experience with the pilot is going to hold up production?
Your question. It's a great question. A lot of the the equipment that we are using in the pilot, as it's scaled down, we don't have as much operational control as you have in the full plan. So we actually often see worse performance in the pilot than we see in, in full scale. If we have any concerns that the treatment process isn't going to meet those treatment goals without that contractor, the contractor will be in the design. It's in, it's in the layout that was provided as a proof of concept. We've run that process through every stage of our pilot, so that we're gathering a lot of data on it. We have hopes for the overall budget and we might be able to pick it up, but as of right now, it's in until other ones. That is your question.
So you're confident?
We're confident that the pilot gives us the information we need to make that decision and we want to have that decision for a few months. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Karen Anderson, eighty-seven Old Ford Road, and I have, I think, one of the most embarrassing questions for the evening. And I should have paid better attention at my school chemistry. But how, how does manganese get into the pond in the river? You mentioned the rain effects. Can you just play me a basic on how manganese can trace that?
One second. So who's the best?
I can probably answer that quickly.
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry.
The town pumped well water from well seventeen A into the pond for decades. And that's where the manganese, for the most part, came from. Generally, surface water won't have a lot of manganese in.
That's what I'm thinking.
Right, but we've been pumping, pumping water with manganese into the pond for twenty plus years.
Does that still happen or did it stop?
Oh, we just filtered green sand filter on well seventeen A, so that water gets filtered at the well and goes directly to the system now. Without any manganese.
And it doesn't want, or is it lost?
Not anymore. We stopped that a couple months ago. A couple months ago.
I read something about water levels. Was that called water levels?
It was used to suck a lot of levels in the summer, so you ran it. Because that well was online when they built the deck factory pond neighborhood. The water was coming upstream, it was black, it wasn't blended. So at that point, back at that time, they ran a pipe to build a bucket pond and they, they pumped a lot of that water into manganese particles.
So you stopped the pumping, exactly, and it'll, that, like, is it just a perpetual problem now? Or somehow does it stop, we just no longer?
That's one question for you guys.
I'm, I'm, sorry, I just wanted to.
That's okay, ma'am. Magn- manganese, there's, so it's a high concentration of manganese in the sediments in Old, in, in Old Open Bucket Pond. And the manganese will continue to dissolve, dissolve into the water quality, which was ultimately all, so, but that's not going to happen quickly because the manganese will begin to up there for decades. So that's, it's an unusual surface water in, in terms of the manganese level.
I want to make it understand, so it's in pond seven on the bottom, separate, settled, and just have.
And, and, and it's solid, so water can't just be, it, you reach equilibrium concentrations. And manganese will go into equilibrium inside a body of water at a level that's not acceptable for, for drainage. So that's why you have to remove it, so. As long as there's enough manganese in the sediments, it'll dissolve itself.
Just one hundred percent. So that just goes like gas, like that will flow back to tax factory pond, just carrying the waters. Actual tax factory pond.
The, the, the direction, the direction of water is tax factory reservoir, that's Old Open Bucket. And it's difficult to have a, have a contaminant like gas move upstream against something that doesn't occur.
So Old Open Bucket's where the concentration is. I thought it was, I'm sorry.
No, no, Steve, you're pretty accurate. Steve, one, one point. Magnesium is in our, our aquifer. There's just water, there's just a level of it in all of it. It just has to be highly concentrated in that area.
Correct. Well, well-worn in this area is going to have measurable concentrations of iron, measurable concentrations of manganese, which can need to be treated. That's why you built the treatment facility, the tax factory pond.
So it's in our, we have water and it has a certain amount of that manganese in it regardless. It's always one.
In the aquifer.
Yes.
In the ground, it's, it's in the.
Well, in the ground, yes, in the soil. But the water, as you pump around it, draws it in.
Got it. Thank you, that's great.
Ken?
I have to say, I remember what Lauren said in terms of, we need to see a rendition. We need to see a, a picture. Some type of a schematic, regardless of where you're going to put this water treatment plant. We need to find someone to put together some type of rendition of what it will look like. Because everybody's going blind here. Just as we have, we knew what the junior high is going to look like, we knew what, oh, I assume you said we talked about that. But at any rate, I think Laura was right. We, we need a concept. We have, we have somebody committed who's trying to put in a common driveway and finally they show us a concept of what these two places would look like and they showed it to us in the beginning, half the problems would have been solved.
So there is one. It's just, they, they have a picture, but it's proof of concept. And that's what we're all saying, that it can't be tweaked.
It can't, that's not working, Tony. You need to have, even if you take a picture of someplace in Quebec, of what this thing could possibly look like. You need to have, even if you take a picture of some place in Quebec, of what this thing could possibly look like.
Yeah, that that's what we're saying, we're all saying the same thing.
And.
We, so, we, when we came before year one for town meeting, we actually presented a render of a proof of concept. We do, we we service that 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 figure, it 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 shows ability, it shows ability.
But we need more than just showing ability.
You need the footprint.
We need to.
And buffers.
Right, we need to.
It's all in there, but it's in a proof of concept of the drawing. And it it can't be tweaked yet until they know what the size of the structure and functionality is. So if you can go in and tweak it a little bit, you know, safely move it five percent here, but it's really not gonna be a true rendition until they're done. Becky?
So Becky, I'm a hundred percent about research division. I think it's just important to remember that this is a unique process in that in addition to what Steve was saying about being municipal building. What we're voting on in the fall is the site, it's the location. So in order to approve the design to the location, nor for the butter, or the residents, it's residents to approve the design to the location, kind of like they all cycle together, right? We can't have the final design until we approve the location, which can then give them funding for the design. And usually some of the comments will come in much later in the process when the design is heard of. Um, so I think if you just present what you just presented a few months ago, that's not gonna work. Um, the tweaks, I think, would be helpful, I think explanation would be helpful. And I think an acknowledgement that this process will just be different because of this addition of that to approve the site at town meeting. Um, so we do need to get as much information as we can from as many people as we can. And hopefully that there will be some guiding questions to help residents either come up with questions or maybe with these matches before, or maybe people receive to this and understand the goals, just to understand the concerns, then understand how to study to build it all together, talk, pick a site, go on a site, and then come up with a plan.
I'll give everyone one last shot, Steve.
Yeah, so I I agree with that, right, you know, it's like the heart before orders and all that kind of stuff, right? Um, I guess the question that that I have is, it is a very big concern of the of the residents, uh, in Old Forest's concerns, is we don't understand the lagoons. If you just tell us, what do the lagoons do? You know, in specific, right? You know, there's just, you know, and that small little snippet that's in the presentation doesn't hack it because you can't, you can't look at anything, you can't decipher anything because you try to blow it up and you can't see. Um, but if you could just explain a little bit about the lagoons, maybe it wouldn't be so scary, right? And and that's kind of, you know, if you could do that tonight, I I would like just a brief actualizer of what it is. But I think that that needs to be in your presentation, right?
So we're gonna, did you give a one minute?
I'm giving thirty thirty seconds. So the filters, collector, and every so many hours, forty eight, sixty, something like that, push water back to the washroom.
Backwards.
Backwards, it's called backwards.
Yes, it's like what you would do in a pool filter, right?
Exactly, yeah. So the water that comes off is gonna go to both the lagoon. Now, the lagoon's gonna be built a certain way so that when this water goes in there, the water will soak into the sink at the bottom of the lagoon, it will get collected into pipes. Okay, and will go back to the head of the plant. To go through the plant, as a percentage of the flow of the plant, the dirt stays there. After a period of time, you switch to the next reservoir. So water doesn't sit in the lagoons. You know, you pump into the lagoon and not too long after that, the water's gone. There's a layer of the residual. I I would get some pictures from the lagoons down in the fountain, uh, make those available for people to look at. I would suggest a trip to the fountain of water treatment plant to see their lagoons, what they look like. They're not recycling lagoons like these are.
Get some pictures of those.
We get some pictures of those. But 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 every once in a while, you switch to the next reservoir and let this stuff dry out. Then the contractor comes in and scrapes it. Basically, the dirt, it's iron, magnesium, pretty much, and it gets all locked to landfill, it gets land. Okay, but the intent of the lagoons is so that we don't overload the wastewater. And we don't waste, and we don't waste it yet.
Right, and 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 so when you say you pump the water in and you back flush it, you know, there's all these numbers thrown out, is that twenty five, thirty thousand gallons, you know, wh- what is that?
We'll we'll confirm that number, but it's 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 probably more than twenty thousand, but, you know, not more than a hundred thousand.
But how is that even possible? That is such a wide range.
I think we know, we know the number, we have to give you the wrong, I want to give you the wrong number, Steve.
Yeah, and one more quick question, what's the consumption, um, on an average for for a cistern of water? I mean, how much do the groups gave them?
Oh, one point five million gallons, I think. Maybe two point four million in some.
Well, there's a lot of it in the top, two point five, two point six.
It gets up there, that's why you start to have.
Right.
Winter, we're low.
Right.
I think the scary part, right, for, again, neighbors, is we don't know. And we don't, we don't, we're not saying that we don't need water treatment, but we all agree on that.
Thanks. Um, I'm gonna bring it back to the board if there's any other questions. And I think we have to decide whether we want to have this meeting on the twenty first or or postpone that until the rest of the treatment is done. The the first, the listening session.
Can you define listening session?
Listening session, one one second.
The listening session is, thirteen, correct?
The listening session is twenty first.
Twenty first.
Next week.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, you have.
My turn, my turn.
You have two quick questions to say, if I want to add one. Just notify people of, I think, uh, have that call.
What's the board want to put the meeting for next Tuesday, the listening session with the neighbors?
Tony, do you want me to just clarify what the consultant says today about what that is meant to look like?
Um, sure.
So the goal, the the the, um, engineering, I mean, communications person working, um, was to have a brief introduction and then allow whoever is there time to share their concerns. And that would be, it wouldn't be a response, it would be presentations. Well, basically, like, what kind of what just happened here without a response or examples? Gather concerns and then be able to incorporate them. Agreed?
Yeah, well, I think also part of it is to make sure that there can be more communication that folks, the residents want. Text or also, what's the best way for for those, uh, butters to say, is it, did you rather get a text? Did you rather get email? Can we give a summary? Also, we can keep everyone informed. It was really made to make sure that, I mean, firstly, I I but it touches many people and so we can get back to the other point, but to make sure that we're talking to those.
I think, I think Ty was a perfect example. What about, tell us about the lagoon.
Right.
What are the lagoons? So the neighbors can say, hey, you talked about this. What is that? The consultant say, and then tailor the responses back to the neighbors. You asked about this, you asked about this, you asked about this, boom, boom, boom. Here are the answers to your specific questions and concerns.
Tony, yeah, just give one more. Steve, would you be willing to be a liaison to set the expectation to the the bulk of the listeners, if you will, or speakers, we're listening, um, are gonna be from the Old Forest neighborhood, I would imagine. So, you know, if he can help articulate with the purposes, we could avoid a disaster that some of us think may happen and we don't want it to happen. So if you'd be willing to articulate that, hey, this is for, this is a receiving session, that's all of it. It's receiving and hearing. I wanna know, you know, how we treat each other. I wanna know who who lives in it. I don't, that's all to be. You're not gonna get anything because they're gonna take all of those concerns and come back and make sure they get answers. That's my understanding. So knowing that that's the format, do we go, do we not?
We've had conversations with the women in the yellow house at the bottom of the hill. Her concerns are, if you build this, what am I, what am I going? I didn't see that, I'm sorry. And what am I gonna get for for runoff? What's gonna come off the hill to my particular house? And we were able to answer her, and I think Steve got back to her. Um, but, I mean, that's what this session is designed for, is one of the particular concerns of the residents in the neighborhood so that we can have specific answers to their specific concerns about that site. And the lagoons is a perfect example. What are they? What do they do? We can't answer how big they are because we haven't got to that point. You know, it's talking to the engineers today, just changing one of the chemicals impacts the size of the lagoons. You use this chemical, this chemical, the lagoons get smaller. We haven't got to the point where it said, we're gonna use chemical layers opposed to chemical beer. We just know without using chlorine gas, that's, it's not gonna do that.
But I think it's.
I I we get, I'm gonna stop because we're just gonna keep going on. We completely get it, right? So the question is, I think the majority of us think this meeting could be exactly the one that we had before because they're getting exactly no more information. There it's gonna be the same. Here's the same win that you did, Mike, three months ago. And all the same questions you're gonna ask again. And we can just go listen to that meeting and hear all the questions. So we have to decide whether that we want to go along with that or we don't want to go along with that. And I don't care one or the other, you know, I'll be at the meeting and I'll listen and we can, we can free, we can form it differently. And hopefully it won't be as angry. Um, but we have nothing more to tell about. Other than asking their email address.
My opinion?
No. They'll be, but what do you guys?
Well, I have a question about, before we get to town meeting, what other boards and committees are going to be hearing about this? Do you already have scheduled meetings, planning board, with the, I'm just asking, what what other public sessions might there be?
You wouldn't have those meetings until you've actually had, this is what we're going to build on this site at this point. And then it goes to conservation, it goes to planning.
Yeah.
The planning wouldn't say, we made this twenty, a twenty five foot buffer, the bylaws a fifty foot buffer because we wanted to pull it away from the neighborhood.
That is after town meeting.
That's after you have site, the design, and you get ready to go build the plant.
So there are no other public forums other than the ones that we're proposing?
These are the ones we have scheduled right now, and as they said earlier, we have the listening session on Wednesday. We have another public one, sorry, next Tuesday, another public one in July. Basically, from what you get out of one of both of those, you then schedule more sessions.
I just wanna make sure that there are no other public entities that are hearing, having formal.
They would have their formal hearings when you have the actual design, right? File and say, planning board, here's what we're proposing.
So we're gonna have three or four meetings with this group before town meeting. You know, that's all we're gonna have to do. The question is, do we have this one, will we go tonight or not? What, you think we should?
I I think we should because even if, even if we're afraid that people are upset, that's our responsibility. If you listen and people are upset, yeah, and if they do, that is our job to listen and they will still learn things from that that they might potentially be upset about. But there also can be some guided questions and opportunities for us to learn about moving forward. I understand it might be scary, but it's not, it's it's an opportunity for us to understand. Here, we have to start, it's a, it's a different type of a process.
I just, I I I don't wanna be here till eleven o'clock talking about this. But I just, I don't see the purpose, I don't, I, I understand. I think we're all listening to now, honestly, and I, and we will continue to listen. But they don't know what they don't know, they don't know what to ask because they don't have anything to base it on. That's what Steve's trying to tell everybody.
But we have very good questions tonight. Okay, and they came tonight and they were able to ask those questions. The consultant now has that, but they, how much water is, we'll get back to you, that's a good question, we'll get back to you. Right, there's people up in that neighborhood now who got a notification saying, we're gonna listen to you next Tuesday night. So they might not have come tonight saying, I don't need to go tonight because they're gonna talk to us next week. And now we're gonna say to them, yeah, forget it, we're not gonna do it.
Look, at the end of the day, I guess it can work, but I don't know how much it's gonna help unless whoever's moderating it is extremely clear on the expectation, extremely clear. That's all, that's whoever's moderating it.
Where, where did you buy?
Steve, gotta wait, right?
So I'll say yes.
Okay. All right, let's have the meeting. I will be there, you will be there, Rob will select those meeting there too, we'll manage it. Um, you know, the expectations of it, um, and, you know, we'll present what we did before. I don't think it's gonna be, shouldn't be productive, but.
Again, we might just get a couple of things. Keep yourself doing is a good thing tonight. You might get one or two of those at the meeting, but those are very important things for us to address for those people.
Sure.
I would bet you a million dollars that it is on the one, if you listen to the meeting and Karen had dug you, they asked.
I'd bet a million dollars, and I'm gonna log on and ask this question again.
All right, let's, let's move on, then we'll we'll have the meeting Tuesday night and we post this live meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next, uh, topic.
Maybe we can get contracts. Almost exciting. I'll be a little. We have four contracts. One contract is we're gonna put on coal, and that's the new environment one for methane. We just notified today by the contractor that the price will change again, they can't own the contract, so we're trying to.
So it's not cheap or crazy.
It didn't get cheaper, it didn't get cheaper, so unfortunately. So, um, I can start off with the Gordon Remington contract, twenty two SS twenty two football soda rash. Estimated annual cost is three hundred ninety thousand dollars with the option of about two one year extensions.
And that's the one that, who said it, right?
Twenty two percent.
Yeah. You can give us.
And right up?
Oh, I'm talking.
Yes.
This is seventy three percent, right? That's one. Seventy three percent, if we get under, we get larger deliveries and sixty five if we get small.
Yes. Gas, my god.
I'm sorry, that was Arizona.
That's what I'm in.
Which one are you dealing right now, guys?
The ash.
Ash is one twenty seven. Soda rash.
Gordon Remington. Gordon Remington.
Yep, and the soda rash one, there's one also from, that's my drug side.
So one, one point three.
Twenty two percent.
We don't have another resource, right? Motion.
Board contract of Gordon Remington Corporation of Rivers, providing sodium, carbon, also, but actually, uh, these two, three, three, seven. Aggregative amount, I think, see three hundred ninety thousand this year, twenty twenty three. With option one year extensions through fiscal year twenty twenty five.
Second one was current, further discussion, seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, four, nothing, it's unanimous, so we're skipping the next one and going to.
You're about which the next one is.
That's the one that went up.
Which is the one that's, I'll second.
What do we, what's, any reason of that?
Covid, Ukraine, all of the above.
This is the pH balance here? So I'm trying to force, I think we need a lot of.
We anticipated everyone would back down, do you think? Is it just, you know, is it just?
I I don't think it's down, the gas drops, am I, you know, we don't, you know, we don't know. The way we work the contracts, we tie it into one year with the option of extending it for one year and then another year. So that if it did start dropping, we would be able to ultimately. But on the same note, if the contract has taken that. But on the same note, if the contract is taking that chance, if the price keeps escalating, we run into that one shit.
Is this like a color?
It's a chemical color, yes. So all the towns are based on same.
Questions? Have a motion?
Move to award a contract of Gordon Remington Corporation of Fall Order to provide the gas and hydroxide at the unit price of five dollars and thirty-four cents. They're about two per gallon for bulk deliveries less than three thousand gallons and five dollars and eleven cents, twelve cents. A gallon above deliveries of more than three thousand gallons for an aggregate amount not to exceed three hundred fifty thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Goodrich for the discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, two, zero. And the last one is for the loader?
Last one is for small load for sewage lands. The idea is we did some expansion over this, so we can take additional sewage from septic trucks and everything else. So one of the things that we do is it runs through kind of this filtration system and it gets all the water out from the sediment that's left, has to be loaded out. So we need these equipments loaded out and then disposed.
And that was passed in special time?
That was passed in special time meeting, we talked about when the, when the additions.
Can that be used for other things too?
Yes. So as part of this, one of the things that we've added to it is, you know, snow blocks, snow plows, we could be plowing with it also. And hopefully get it up the river and get it to all the town facilities and do snowplowing on that.
What's the chemical?
Also, as well as Sonic, you know, we've been loading stuff, they use it for a whole bunch of things.
What did we pass at town meeting?
One thirty-five.
So it's a little more.
It's a little more. Prices have gone up significantly in all the equipment across the board. But kept honoring the price they quoted us. One of the things that we did add is a snow bucket on there so that we could use it for snow and I believe those are coming, the foggy plow are coming down the snow.
Have a motion?
Move to award the contract to South Florida, looking at HEP, void purchase of a HEP nine O eight M that will load for sewage department in the amount of one hundred eighty thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second.
Second one is Conley, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, four, two, zero.
Thanks very much.
So next we have the transfer, or the evidence fund and rates.
Do you mind doing everything after that and then circle back if you have time?
Yeah, I'll do your time.
I think it would be easy one. They're out there. So jumping ahead, sorry, with the chair.
Yes.
Move forward to the annual annual surveys. So pursuant to the select board policy on annuals question and billing, once a year in June, we look at the outstanding list and we write off any that's older than, older than twenty-four months. What you've been doing since you adopted this policy, we live in sixty months open for further collection. And if we continue to do that this year, we would, we're looking to write off the fiscal seventeen open balances, which totals fifty-five thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents, meaning fiscal eighteen forwards to open for collection.
Second. Any questions for Nancy's evidence?
No, just the numbers.
So the total write-off will be the forty?
Fifty-five, forty-nine, sixty-two. That's just a motion as incorrect. What is it fifty-five, what, forty-nine, sixty-two? It's correct, I mean, action saw it, it's just right. Oh, I see, okay. That's what I was trying to. Okay.
Do this every year? But I'm just. Small, though.
Yeah.
And these are typically claims that you can charge companies just.
The insurance for the lower glass that didn't get paid. Patients didn't pay, patients too much money, patients found. There's a hardship with those we communicate separately.
Sixty percent of that bad debt, is that, is that those numbers over here, the three fifteen or twenty?
We normally have an average billing of around two million, but we only collect about fifty percent of that because that's all we're allowed to collect because of Medicare and Medicaid. Few years back, that was about twenty-two percent of loans. So we're restricted on what we can do for collection. So.
How much should we write off that is, that isn't that, that isn't?
If it's two million overall bill and this is fifty-five, it's a small percentage.
Yeah, this, this isn't one years.
Well, you're only writing off one year of the seventeen. So what is it?
Any questions? Got a motion?
Move to approve the recommend of defense for all outstanding ambulance charges from fiscal year two thousand seventeen, totaling fifty-five thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents.
Second.
Second one is Conley, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I think it is four, two, zero.
The next thing that the board for their consideration is year transfer. The advisory committee has heard their receiving by Zoom, via Zoom. And they think about the interstate in Bay versus second zero, which was important transfers that are required. There's four basic groupings. The first is advisory committee, due to the large annual special time meeting added April, we threatened more advisory committee book total. It was far more than their budget. Since we did not use the foreign secretary salaries, we're just proposing to move that, those ones up to their new ones budget. Second grouping is a little mixed bag of people being a little short for this, that, and the other thing. Our payer, the computer, additional station area for forty B filings. The work to secure properties that were proposed on their tax titles. Those types of things. And Kevin in the public rounds budget has a significant surplus in salaries due to vacancies. So he's consenting to the, of all his other department budgets in the sports, he's good to do those transfers. Then there's the police department, they have vehicle service and vehicle supplies budget that would just completely exhaust this year. And part of the reason is the EVOC training, the invasive labor training that the pets go through. So they send, there were three pets this year, the puss papping. They go out with their leave on EVOC training, take a cruiser, they come back, the cruiser goes, they need to get some rest. The nature of the training. So add that on top of everything else, they have to do their fleet. They have to finish it, they have some funds in their payroll funds, they would just like to move over onto those expense lines. And in the final, this is a surprise, I don't think this is a big surprise to anybody. There's too much going on in the world. Their electricity, natural gas budgets are overspent. And they would like to move some of their payroll funds, not asking for any additional, just move some of the payroll ones up into those expense lines.
Any question?
I have a question. Just the police line. Those funds don't need to be kept there for future educational purposes?
It's, they'll close out twenty-three.
Okay.
So they have to use it this fiscal year.
Any other questions? I have a motion.
Move to transfer from the available full fiscal year two thousand twenty-two general fund to work enterprise fund budget lines as indicated on the provided spreadsheet to other general fund and to enterprise fund budget lines respectively. The sum of seventy-five thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for student to master launch after forty-four B. Section thirty-three towards the multiple end of year issues with unexpected costs for various departments.
Second, I, Mr. Goodrich, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I, unanimous, four, zero.
So the final agenda that you have saving, in my own few minutes late, you don't count the, the rate discussion, is to award a contract of Palmer Associates for owners project manager services for the White House restoration project, which was a planned annual town meeting and open M portion. For that was moved special time into the process of the county meeting. It wasn't our, our best issue, it went three responses and two of the three firms were interviewed. Palmer Associates and Berthex was the other firm I was going to interview. Palmer Associates specifically cast White House restoration experience. They were the open M record for the A head White House move and then two other projects, including the renovation project of that White House. So that was what the committee is recommending to move forward with. It has been a fee proposal that was sent out to us this morning, that was a revised fee proposal and the total work is half that we move forward. And that's sixty-eight thousand dollars. I know it's on the legal table, but we actually appropriated a hundred thousand dollars and this is only sixty-eight thousand dollars, so we finally go vendor duty to town and it sells, so it's wonderful.
That's great. I'm sure there'll be some thirty-two thousand dollar expenses involved.
Danger.
But, um. So I couldn't find that in the proposal.
The sixty-eight thousand?
Yeah.
Because that, that was my.
No, it's just long and complicated and I couldn't figure it out.
No, no.
Yeah.
That was the, that was what was in your packet. It was the proposal that we got today that had dollar value. It was about six pages.
Yes.
I just wanted to see the, the work they had done on the meeting and it's like.
Yeah.
And that's a whole logo special. It's a lot of stuff. It's a very interesting logo special.
They're clearly experienced in.
Just what we have.
Any questions about that? So this is just the OPM, sixty-eight thousand dollars compared to a hundred thousand dollars, of the two million, is that what?
And then there's another two million for the actual work.
Oh, the.
That'll be able to like.
A hundred is a part of the two million?
No, you're right, you're right. It is one point nine one. Sorry. I'm just trying to give ourselves an extra hundred. It's like us, I'm concerned.
All right. There's no questions, got a motion?
Move to.
No, go for it.
All right, move toward contract for almost project manager services for the restoration of this to our situation like was to Palmer Associates for the Eastbridge Barn Nest in amount, amount to exceed sixty-eight thousand dollars basically.
Even?
Even, second.
Second one is Curran for the discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I think it's four, two, zero, right?
The, the big thing that's going to be on that, we're going to move as quickly as possible. The big question is going to be whether or not that whole top asset come off. And actually go off and be fabricated someplace else. And when are we going to have to take it off, given how bad is the weather? So, you know, it could come off fairly certain, then there'd be no light out, but it's a temporary light for the time that it's being fabricated, brought back. But just to the preliminary look at it, it's going to be almost impossible to fix it. And it's not like, yeah.
I'd like to make the suggestion that we move these, uh, great discussions. Make sense?
Instead of seeing that might happen, I have it scheduled for the next three meetings.
Oh, I was going to ask you, you don't need to, you need to have some time.
I plan ahead. Because you know, you know that the board likes these three meetings to discuss it. So.
And also a big thing to have, all five of us here.
And you have materials in front of you, so you give you a chance to.
To digest, yes.
Some certainly others.
Maybe I sort of would put it closer to the front of the meeting. Yes, citizen system. I, it always frustrates me when it comes to that, Santa Claus.
I think, but I guess we're going to put the citizen stuff first if we can, and then maybe you can move that up a little bit.
I didn't get no appearance tonight, but we have to.
Great, we have some new business. We have a discussion emergency one day licenses.
These are licenses that we use for ways to include most of the things that have to come really quickly that can't wait to have future meeting.
So is that a whole separate one?
That's a separate.
Six, yes. Got a motion to approve six line emergency one day wine and malt licenses.
Move to approve six line emergency one day licenses.
Second one, Mr. Goodrich, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, four, zero. Now we have some one day malt and, uh, wine and malt licenses.
Move that the select board approve one day wine and malt licenses to Malinas Fish Market at Eat Allen Place for events on June sixteenth and June twenty-sixth from seven to eleven P M. We'll just do them all?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Superior Servers at Central Maritime Center for events on July thirty-first and August fourteenth from eleven A M to two P M. To Simply Good Catering at Lucky Finn for event on June twenty-fourth from six to ten P M. And to El McKenzie, that Central Carter Community Building for event on June twenty-fourth from six to ten P M.
Second.
Second one is Conley, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I, unanimous, four, zero. And, uh, Corinne, thanks for sending us that list of all of the proof papers.
Yes.
The next one is the open the warrant for fall special town meeting on September nineteenth.
We've got the select board open the warrant for the fall special town meeting to be held on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Second one is Conley, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I, unanimous, four, two, zero. Now we have, um, the deployed disclosures. These are for people that work into the facets of our town. The direct program, if there's somewhere or not. See the sun going there.
Do you want each line read, Mr. Chair, or just as?
Do we just say as written? Yeah.
Move that the board of, or the select board, move that the select board, you guys require for the Massachusetts general launch after two sixty-eight A. As we review the disclosure forms from the following municipal employees who seek to provide personal services to sexual recreation, the exemption under section, um, paragraph twenty-eight, section B is approved for the following municipal employees as listed in our backup.
Second.
Second one is Conley, further discussion. Again, this is list of employees, teachers, or people that have jobs in two entities in town that just have to disclose that. So, my son works for the golf course as well as, uh, rec. Uh, Mr. Corrier is a math, that's a history teacher, as well as he does basketball. And there are about twenty of them all. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I, unanimous, four, two, zero. Next one is the appointment of election workers and social regional school district representative. And. The list of about twelve.
And we could do this on a, uh, off the list too.
Yeah.
For their topic and, um, correct town committees.
So, can I have a motion to appoint the election workers for the approved lists submitted by Democratic and Republican town, uh, community chairs as listed in our packet? Second one is Mr. Goodrich, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I, unanimous, four, two, zero.
And if we have a motion for Jack Manning to be.
No. Is the, uh, social representative again?
Yes.
Do we need to do a separate one?
Yes, can I have a motion to appoint Jack Manning as the social regional school district representative?
So.
Second.
Second.
Our Miss Conley, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
I, it's three years, I'm just.
And we have a new drain layers license?
Move to approve new rain names license for Joseph Kehoe, contracted one forty-five grand, three dry, Alvestas Ness.
Second.
Turn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Especially going on coastal banking, uh, commissions correspondence.
You asked to put that in, Tony?
So again.
You asked to put that in. In letter you received from the Council of Posy Commission, wants it to add.
That was where they're asking us to marshal the federal state and everybody else to come to situate to talk about various things.
Right, so I wanted to bring it up to discussion to see if we wanted to support that. Right, so I wanted to bring it up to discussion, see if we wanted to support that. So.
I actually, I, I love to have some discussions, I have at least one that, uh, was back on the table that, uh, I had.
Will, we do a permit, just so we have it, uh, according to Kyle's grant out there for about two million dollars. This project's about ten, um, but if we got two million dollars to put sand in, we put two million dollars, we'll just stand this, what happens, but we'll keep the permit current. So something, yeah, there's a demonstration project that I don't think they ever did any of.
Right.
We didn't get it, but I don't think any of the projects that they gave us are actually gonna be signed. So, but I think we wanna keep the permit active in case something comes up, but, uh, it's not a project that they could ten million dollars and could rush out to fund ourselves.
So the coastal advisory commission asked us to invite all of our, uh, local, state, and federal representatives to come and discuss this issue.
What issues, uh?
All the towns, many fires, year.
Climate change, rising sea levels, deterioration in the offshore. So. Who's the liaison on the back?
Me, Karen, Sharon.
You wanna see exactly what they want from us?
Yeah, I will, they, they.
But do they want us to overform, or do they want us to send up just the R?
Uh, I know. They haven't been sending, um, meetings, so I don't know. They just started. Well, I guess my question to them would be, did they come to the meeting that we invited, um, both Kyle and, uh, Kevin Cafferty to go through all of the various projects that are in the works in terms of sea walls, et cetera? Because I thought that was pretty comprehensive and I thought that, you know, I, I think our congressional motion, the police knows about the theme of projects that we're waiting on. They know about the, uh, the sea wall one and sand hills. So I, I, I would just be hesitant to ask people to come if there's something that is real ask that we haven't already been dogging, frankly?
Yeah, I mean, you have to ask them, I think their, um, rationale might be to say, we've asked for money for these projects, but this is the scope of all we have to do.
Yeah.
So maybe, you know, oh, well, we get a project for seventeen million dollars, all right, well, we, yeah, we get a seventeen million dollar project, they're like sixteen million dollar project, they're like ten million dollar project. Maybe they.
I mean, it's a good idea, yes.
Maybe they had an understanding of exactly the scope of what we're facing, we might get a little more love in terms of funding it once we're looking. I, I don't know, but that's what I'm suspecting.
I'll call them and get clarification for their, their job to know the proper way.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the letter, I think they wanted to, let's do that presentation again.
Right, yeah.
And then take them either out of the bowl, or take them in a, in a classroom, take them and say, look, this and this.
It doesn't need to be resurfaced, because things very tough of mind in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, that was kind of.
We've, we've had, we've had Lynch down, I'm sure Kitty would come, questions whether or not to get, might be the one, no, they.
Well, we've certainly cleared our brass, I think that's true.
Yeah, yeah.
Your.
I'll take that.
Uh, I'm gonna postpone the next one, cause Karen's not here. Probably. Be involved with that.
She got one in her pocket, yeah.
Yes, I have to see, great transition to the liaison reports. I went to my, I went to the county meeting on whatever it was, Tuesday night.
How was it?
Spectacular, um, and we.
I'm getting open it, Zoom.
Yes, they, uh, they passed the budget. It's luckily funded and, uh, it was, it wasn't a lot of, uh, recognition, we didn't really start, but, uh, they brought the budget out, it was a very quick process. The board made a question to ask, anything like that. Any other liaison reports?
I have one, uh, the Waterways meeting this week, um, the Highland Enterprise Dock Project, Dock replacement project for Waterways. Uh, where we, uh, received a million dollars from the Seaport Advisory Council. The cost, there was a little bit of a mistake at the estimated size of the docks, so, um, the cost is really gonna come in more than two million dollars. Um, so, um, they did, they did as a committee approve to, you know, put that number forward. They're gonna go back to Seaport Advisory and request, you know, to see the general additional funds as well. Uh, for them to come back, you know, to the town. Maybe show comments to the guys, but a little bit of a miscalculation, I think, the star of the project that underestimated the square footage of the docks that would be there.
They can't get more money than you have to.
They're gonna, they're gonna ask for all of it, they're not.
So that's. That's the way we're using it.
We talked about my resources.
You wanna tell us more?
Hey, we're making good progress. And do the survey, it's on the website. Uh, can we, uh, correspond?
Correspondents, yeah, I just.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, just, just a couple of brief things, um, while I was traveling up to Canada, we had WGB streaming on our song system. And, um, the Irish Heritage Trail was mentioned as a part of the, you know, the Department of Commerce, Tourism, Massachusetts Tourism. So even when you're off somewhere else, you can hear about the Irish Heritage Trail, so I, I thought that was kind of a good thing. Uh, Jim and I are attending a meeting, capacity tomorrow, about silver. We've been invited to cross the border, to visit them in Wilkup Commons, that's still on, yes. Nine A M, we'll go right early. And the RFP went out for, uh, the year forty-four, uh, project. So hopefully people start to hear about what we might be thinking about, yeah. Very nice. Correspondents? So on Saturday, June twenty-fifth, the second annual trivia night is going to be held by the famous Poetarians, listed by T.J. Glory, Ali, Cardy will be there, it'll be raffle tickets. It's going to be held, uh, at St. Mary's Parish Center from six to nine P M, like dinner, tickets are twenty dollars. Uh, you can reserve tickets, um, via PayPal, at the situate within a road ring site. Uh, or also contacting CeeLo Sorrentino or Joan Powers, um, to work on the event, so that sounds like fun. And I think that's, you know, we had some correspondence, which you talked about with regards to Waterways, when Mike is there, but, uh, I think that's it.
A couple of things, I, I do want, I don't think we've met this memorial yet, um, wanna thank everybody for putting that together, that was a great event, um, and we, we, we got some sick people there and, and, uh, Bob Chacy stepped up and, and plugged it in nicely, and the guest speaker was awesome as well. I do want to congratulate all the seniors who graduated, they had great graduation, weather was perfect, uh, great attendance, great speeches, uh, from students. And, um, looking at, you know, uh, actually, you know, they, they put the names of the schools on their, uh, on the caps. Spectacular schools, some of these visit more, so, uh, congratulations to all of them. Uh, staying to the school theme, I wanna congratulate both our baseball and, um, lacrosse programs, both have gotten to the playoffs. And play and won the lacrosse hockey game in the most really tough game. The baseball team lost, uh, a playoff game, but they tied it up with two outs in the last inning and lost the next game, but good, great turnout at the field, the field spectacular, and, um, unfortunately, uh, the ball was a tough, sort of, uh, a great season anyways. Um, and last thing I just want to mention, Jim, if you can, can you get an update from Dallas on, what's called, uh, the, uh, search units, so we can figure out this shellfish and warm up and all that stuff? Right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
To approve select board meeting, yes, for May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Second.
Second one is Curran, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, four to zero.
Move to, uh, for a fourth, second session meeting, then it's for May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Second.
Second one is Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Great, can I have a motion to adjourn and sign documents?
So. Second.
Goodnight, everybody, thank you very much for joining. Thank you guys for coming.